Now we say, "Mute to see, nica son." Just want to say, "Welcome." My name is Zachary DeWolf. Thank you for being here. I am now calling the June 24th, 2020 Regular Board Meeting to Order at 1:00 PM. We live, serve, and go to a school, go to school in a city that is the ancestral homeland to the Duamish people, Mukulshut Nation, and the Saquamish Nation. We acknowledge them as custodians of this land since time immemorial. As guests, and in many of our cases, as settlers on this land, we extend our deepest gratitude and respect to their ancestors and elders, past, present, and future. I would now like to turn it over to Director Hershey for a moment.
Thank you, President DeWolf. I just wanted to take a moment to observe a moment of silence for the student Lorenzo who was killed at the Capitol Hill organized protest. Our hearts weigh heavily in this moment, especially considering that there is so much violence going on, not only in our world, but in our city. And looking at our agenda tonight, hopefully, we will be able to address some of the violence that is not only taking place in our city, but also in our schools. So, in honor of Lorenzo, if you could just join me in a few moments of silence, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Hershey. Now, I'll turn it over to Ms. Wilson Jones for the roll call, please.
Director Hampson?
Here.
Director Harris?
Present.
Director Hershey?
Here.
Director Mack?
Here.
Director Rankin?
Here.
Director Rivera Smith?
Present.
Director DeWolf?
Here.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. Superintendent Juno is also joining us for today's meeting, and additional staff will be briefing the board as we move through the agenda. This meeting is being held remotely per the Governor's proclamation, 28.5 prohibiting meetings such as this one from being held in person. And I'll note that members of the public are also, may also be joining via phone or online streaming. I will not be asking members of the public to identify themselves now other than when we move into public testimony, but thank you to those joining us. To facilitate this meeting, I will ask all participants to ensure you are muted when you are not speaking. Staff may be muting participants to address feedback and ensure we can hear from directors and staff. The chat function of Microsoft Teams will also not be used for today's meeting. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Juno for her comments.
Thank you, directors. And I think you will see a PowerPoint come up soon that we will move through. Thank you. I just wanted to also echo what we heard this morning and just make sure that we are sending condolences to the inter-agency Gray Wolves family and let them know that we mourn with all those who knew and loved Lorenzo. And so, that is always really hard, difficult news. And also, since it is the wrap-up of our 2019-20 school year, I want to take a little bit of time to share some of the accomplishments from this past school year. As we all know, it was a year not like any other that we have ever experienced, and yet, SPS staff still got a lot done. Next slide, please. Well, this year did not go exactly how we had planned. We never lost sight, even in the middle of a crisis, of our priorities outlined in our strategic plan, Seattle Excellence. We committed to and held ourselves accountable to centering students of color for this from educational justice with a particular focus on African-American boys and teens in our decision-making throughout this entire process. Next slide, please. Just a few, these are just going to be very high-level, just a few of our accomplishments. A longer list can be found on my SPS, and I would just encourage directors to go check that out because it would make you very, very proud to be leaders in a district that got so much done in the middle of the COVID closures. These accomplishments, we recently had, you know, it didn't dampen the spirits of end-of-school celebrations. And we had, we had our annual John Stanford Center, annual wrap-up of the year celebration. And it was actually really a lot of fun, even though it was remote, but we got to share a lot of the great work that happened this year. Next slide, please. If you think way back to where, you know, before all this, it's important to remember some things actually happened pre-COVID. Like, things like we established the African-American Male Achievement Department, including the hiring of an awesome executive director and two managers. They launched the African-American Student Leadership Council. As you were engaged with our engagement teams around reopening, you heard several of their voices included, and they continue to help us with our major district decisions. Coaching was provided, the 42 racial equity teams. There was a winter institute that was held. And I know that you've also heard through our strategic plan updates, the piloting of Academic Parent Teacher Teams, or APTT, at three of our 13 priority schools in support of improved family engagement and student learning. Those will be some great lessons that we can expand our family engagement to other schools as well. Next slide, please. 1,400 educators from 25 schools attended racial equity training during this past school year. I just want to say that again, 1,400 educators from 25 schools. I know that several of you always ask for numbers, and so, that is really, really great that this type of engagement with, from our staff is happening. And as you all know, a big celebration is we enrolled six times as many students in the summer of learning as we usually do. 15,000 students enrolled for summer school. We have over 350 support staff that are helping with the summer programming. Do you remember at the beginning, a lot of our educators stepped up to create videos for SPS TV for at-home learning? And our educators made 618 of those videos. Those videos were viewed over 308,000 times for a total of over 26,400 hours of viewing. And so, I just want to thank all the educators who stepped up to make sure that those were out there for our families to watch. And from the numbers, they surely were successful. Those, we had line-learning packets aligned to the videos. And over 105,500 of those packets were distributed at our 26 meal sites. We also had community partners that brought them out to, to our, our housing partners. And just a lot of heroic efforts. Those were all translated, so out into our community. So, just a big, heavy lift there. And we had a great team at Central and across the district who really helped make sure that we were getting this remote learning products out to our families. And so, those are awesome numbers and just really want to thank the teams for bringing that together. Next slide, please. This is a pretty impressive number. As we know that there was still essential staff that was coming, that were coming into schools and into buildings throughout this entire closure. One of those essential staff groups were our custodial services. And you can see those numbers. They cleaned and maintained 8,797,851 square feet. So, just read through that slide. And just the huge lift and the awesomeness of our custodial staff, just really appreciate the work that they kept going throughout the summer. And so, you know, we have great SPS staff. Next slide, please. If you think back way before we were thinking about coming up with a vaccine for our new virus, there was a call that we had to get our student immunization records up to date. Our Health Services Department processed over 2,000 records to achieve a 97% immunization record compliance rate, which is really huge. And so, even before all of this new virus, there was a lot of vaccination things happening. And just read through, there were eight, over 830,000 miles. That's not the final number, so I expect that number to actually be higher. But over 830,000 meals were served over the 14 weeks at 26 meal sites, affordable housing sites, and through community partners. And as we know, we were also, you know, scrambling to get devices out to our students so they could engage in remote learning. And over, and 25,500 devices were distributed. That included the 9,000 Chromebooks donated by Amazon. And so, I just really also want to thank the DOTS team. They did a heroic lift of, you know, getting into schools, emptying those laptop carts, getting new devices in, imaging them, distributing them. And so, that was just a phenomenal job. And so, thanks to all the staff who got all of these things out. And throughout this entire closure, it's been pretty inspiring about our community partners, philanthropic partners stepping up to really assist in all of these efforts. And just a few of the amazing partnerships that were built or made stronger during this COVID closure to support our students and families. Of course, the Alliance for Education. They continue to be a super-strong partner, working with a lot of different groups to bring money and resources and assistance to SPS, not just during the closure, but always. Amazon stepped up in a really big way. Fair Start, Microsoft, Sea City, Facebook, Gates Foundation, and so, so many more. And I, as the superintendent of Seattle Public Schools, just really want to thank our community for everything they've done to come up, in alongside of us and to support our school communities and our students. And it's just so important to make sure that we can maintain this effort of our community partnerships because they're going to be needed for sure for next year. And, next slide, please. I also, as part of our partners, want to thank the Seattle Council PTSA. They did a significant lift with our communities and our parents of getting information to us in a timely way and making sure they were reaching out during all kinds of efforts. And so, they've been a super-strong partner, as we've been throughout this closure too. And a lot of the work, we would not have been able to lift without them. So, thank them as well. And just know that regardless of how we start school in fall 2020, and I know that there's still a lot of work to be done and a lot of leadership to be provided from the district and with the board, we will continue to focus on these priorities and to center African-American boys and teens and other students for this from educational justice as we continue to do this work. So, just super thankful. I think, you know, we talk a lot about gratitude, and I am just full of gratitude for all of, everybody who came to circle in around Seattle Public Schools during this time. And as you see from the high-level numbers, and, you know, again, I would encourage you to go check out SPS TV and see the longer list. Just super proud of our staff and super grateful that people came together to support our students throughout this closure and hope that momentum continues. So, thank you, directors, for all of your assistance throughout this as well and look forward to continuing our good work together.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Superintendent Juno. And I just wanted to add one additional highlight. Superintendent Juno, myself, as well as Director Hampson, as co-triple nations liaisons, sent letters, letters to all 29 of the federally-recognized tribes here in the state and asked if they, you know, needed any of our support, particularly in the use of any of our educational resources. And I know that we had heard back from the Tulalip tribe. And so, just another additional place of collaboration and something to celebrate that we were able to partner with tribes here in the state. So, thank you for that presentation. We have now reached the consent portion of today's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
This is Director Hampson, so moved.
Second, Director Harris?
Thank you. Approval of the consent agenda has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Harris. Do directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Director, President DeWolf, this is Director Mack.
Yes.
I don't wish to remove something, but I did want to make note, just so that all directors are aware, that there are two items on the agenda, on the consent agenda that have been, have come through OPS for approval, but they have not actually been introduced to the full board. And we typically do that. So, just for everyone's knowledge, make sure you double-check that because they weren't actually intro'd with the full board, their intro action today. They did come through OPS with a recommendation for approval, though, and I'm not asking to pull them. I just wanted to call that out so that directors were aware.
Thank you, Director Mack. Do any other directors have any items they would like to remove from consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The consent agenda has passed unanimously. Thank you, directors, and thank you for that clarification, Director Mack. We have now reached a moment before our public testimony portion, which does not start until 1:30. So, I would ask any directors who would like to give their board comments now, which we had reserved for the end of the meeting, to either provide those now, or we can, I would rather not take a recess. So, if directors would like to share comments now, I'll just go through alphabetically and let me know if you'd like to pass. That's, that's okay as well. And like I said, we do need to wait until 1:30 for public comment. So, Director Hampson?
I will pass for now, thank you.
Thank you. Director Harris?
Pass for now, thank you.
Director Hershey?
None for me right now, thank you.
Director Mack?
Also, pass for now, thank you.
Director Rankin?
Well, I want to pass too. But I feel bad wasting this 12 minutes. I'm not, I'm just not prepared at this moment.
Director Rivera Smith?
Okay, everybody's here. Mine is an attendee, so.
If folks can please mute yourselves. Director Rivera Smith?
I'll pass for now, thank you.
Okay. Well, if directors have all agreed to pass, we will take a, we can either pause here for 10 minutes or we can jump to introduction items. My, my concern with jumping to introduction would be that we will likely get into a deep conversation. And I, I'm not sure prepared for that. So, Ellie, I think, given that directors do not want to provide any board comments right now, it seems like the best course of action would be to take a small recess.
Director DeWolf?
Ms. Wilson, oh, yes, Director Hampson?
We have, our public comments, public testimony list is short?
Yes.
I don't know if, if it's within our, within protocol or policy to be able to take, to ask anyone to go earlier or to take additional? No, okay.
I think we just need to wait till 1:30 because that's what's been publicly noticed.
Okay.
Yeah. So, given where we're at, I will take a 10-minute recess, and we will resume at 1:30 PM on the DOT. Given where we're at, I will uh take a ten minute recess and we will resume at one thirty P M on the dot. At one thirty P M and as we have now reached one thirty P M. We will next go to public testimony. And for folks uh just joining us, uh we are really looking forward to bring public comment. Since public testimony back um and so really grateful for today. Um board procedure one four three zero B P provides the rules for providing testimony. I ask that speakers are respectful of these rules which will be shown on the screen while I explain the process for public testimony today. Uh a- and before I begin also want to just share my gratitude to our board office for um. Figuring this out because I know this is a little bit more challenging logistically virtually. So, public testimony will be taken remotely with speakers participating by phone or through Microsoft Teams. For those who are joining us with Microsoft Teams, you will see the testimony list displayed five names at a time. Staff will advance the testimony list on the screen as we move for the speakers. The testimony list for today's meeting is also available on the school board website as part of the agenda posting for today. Please remain muted until your name is called to provide testimony. When your name is called, please ensure you're muted unmuted in Microsoft Teams and begin your testimony. If you have joined by phone, please be sure you have unmuted on the device you are calling from and also press star six to unmute yourself on the conference line. Each speaker will have a two minute speaking time and once your name is read, staff will begin a two minute timer. And if you are joining with Microsoft Teams, you will see a progress bar at the bottom of your screen. It will turn orange from left to right as your time is exhausted. For those participating in Microsoft Teams and by phone, you should also hear a chime sound when the two minutes have been exhausted. This chime indicates your time has ended and the next speaker will be called. So, thank you everybody for your flexibility and patience today. Ms. Wilson Jones, please read off the testimony speakers.
First for public testimony is Chris Jackins.
Okay, we are now back from recess. At one thirty P M and as we have now reached one thirty P M. We will next go to public testimony. And for folks uh just joining us, uh we are really looking forward to bring public comment. Since public testimony back um and so really grateful for today. Um board procedure one four three zero B P provides the rules for providing testimony. I ask that speakers are respectful of these rules which will be shown on the screen while I explain the process for public testimony today. Uh a- and before I begin also want to just share my gratitude to our board office for um. Figuring this out because I know this is a little bit more challenging logistically virtually. So, public testimony will be taken remotely with speakers participating by phone or through Microsoft Teams. For those who are joining us with Microsoft Teams, you will see the testimony list displayed five names at a time. Staff will advance the testimony list on the screen as we move for the speakers. The testimony list for today's meeting is also available on the school board website as part of the agenda posting for today. Please remain muted until your name is called to provide testimony. When your name is called, please ensure you're muted unmuted in Microsoft Teams and begin your testimony. If you have joined by phone, please be sure you have unmuted on the device you are calling from and also press star six to unmute yourself on the conference line. Each speaker will have a two minute speaking time and once your name is read, staff will begin a two minute timer. And if you are joining with Microsoft Teams, you will see a progress bar at the bottom of your screen. It will turn orange from left to right as your time is exhausted. For those participating in Microsoft Teams and by phone, you should also hear a chime sound when the two minutes have been exhausted. This chime indicates your time has ended and the next speaker will be called. So, thank you everybody for your flexibility and patience today. Ms. Wilson Jones, please read off the testimony speakers.
First for public testimony is Chris Jackins.
My name is Chris Jackins. Box eight four zero six three Seattle nine eight one two four. On final acceptance of the Wilson Pacific project. Five points, number one, the board report deliberately obscures important facts. Number two, the project resulted in three evictions. Lipton Springs K eight, Indian Heritage High School and the Clear Sky Native Youth Program. Number three, the site was landmarked by the city but not because of the murals. But because of the importance of the native history of the site including Indian Heritage High School. Its principal Robert Eaglestaff and the centuries old importance to Indian tribes of Lipton Springs which runs through the site. Number four, the school district fought the landmarking and sued the city to be able to demolish the landmarked native history at the site. Number five, the project was an horrendous example of wrongdoing by the school district, please vote no. On the board resolution opposing landmarking of Rainier Beach High School, five points, number one, this resolution is another horrendous mistake. Number two, the history of Rainier Beach deserves respectful consideration as a city landmark. Number three, instead the district has hired a consultant to claim that Rainier Beach has no important history. Number four, the same consultant and the same district staff wrongly claimed Wilson Pacific had no important native history. Number five, please respect the history of Rainier Beach, please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for public testimony is Carrie Sev- Severson.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Carrie Severson and I'm a licensed clinical social worker and a school social worker at Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. This marks the end of my thirteenth year in Seattle Public Schools. I was honored this year as the twenty twenty National School Social Worker of the Year. I'm here to speak specifically to the role of the school social worker as we face reopening this fall due to go COVID and the need to replace law enforcement with student support personnel. On the agenda for today, we are discussing student rights and responsibilities and the resolution twenty nineteen twenty dash thirty eight affirming S P S's commitment to black students. Both reference the need for more school social workers in our buildings. A school social worker holds a master's degree and a certification as an education staff associate. The role of the school social worker is to provide an integral link between school, home, and community. This is accomplished by removing barriers and providing services that include mental health and academic counseling, support for students and parents, crisis prevention and intervention, professional case management, collaboration with community agencies, social emotional learning, and advocacy for students and parents. At Robert Eaglestaff, we use restorative practices instead of exclusionary practices. And the reason we're able to do this work systematically is because of the role of the school social worker. We are trauma informed, provide mental health expertise, and our strength lies in creating community partnerships and wraparound services for our students and families. In Seattle Public Schools, there are thirty five E S A school social workers, about half of those work in buildings. When I began in two thousand seven, there were three of us. Due to the weighted staffing standards and the prototypical school funding, social workers are often funded through various grants or discretionary funds at the building level. Job position prospects and retention are a concern due to inconsistent funding and lack of an established department in our district. Just this year, we have established an outlook group, created a P L C for social workers, planned professional development together for next school year and have come out from hiding under others' titles. We are an established and viable profession nationally and Washington State is far behind where we could be. Seattle could set the example, thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Next up for public testimony is Anne Sheeran.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh so I'm the parent of an incoming senior with an I P at West Seattle High School and an eighth grader without an I P at Washington Middle School. In the past several months, you've heard from our uh special ed families about our difficulties getting real questions. Real answers to questions um about district actions affecting our students. From continuous learning plans to data collection, responses from the Special Education Department are vague, nonexistent, or inconsistent. I doubt that we have a policy now of keeping our special needs families in the dark and I am concerned about what is going on. I worry that this inability to provide clear information to our questions signifies a deeper problem that we have no planners or nobody accountable in the special ed department. I'm sorry to be so blunt, but I hope that you will find out. I am also concerned about the district's vision and commitment to inclusion if online learning is going to continue in some form, it seems likely in the fall. The experience so far has been horribly resegregating for our students with disabilities who, without access to their regular services and supports, have been cut off from their gen ed classes. Yet, when Superintendent Juneau opened the special ed town hall last month, she gave a shout out to a special education teacher for getting all of her I E P students together for weekly lunch buddies. A teacher practice that actually sets an incredibly low bar for inclusion and for special educators. And in this case failed to recognize that the students in that caseload are all access students in the first place. That is, they received their services in gen ed and yet all they got was a lunch buddies. Why not find a special education teacher who is successfully navigating the sped gen ed divide during school closures and celebrate that instead of celebrating the most segregated practice of all? I am hoping that the school board can help set expectations for how the district will speak about and practice inclusion in the fall, thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Next up for public testimony is Manuela Sly.
Good afternoon, my name is Manuela Sly, president of Seattle Council P T S A. Thank you for bringing forth this resolution affirming Seattle Public Schools' commitment to black students. Regarding the moratorium on S E Os, I want to stress the importance of listening to community and the voices of students with an intentional focus on those at schools impacted by this moratorium. We need authentic committee engagement and we need to discuss the life experiences of students in these communities and the role of the officers in their schools. We need to discuss needs and we need to discuss alternatives outside the police partnership. But most importantly, we need to look at a bigger picture. School administrators and teachers must have the skill and the resources to deescalate situations and avoid calling the police intervention. I hear counselors and social workers are great alternatives and I believe so, but painful reality has proven sometimes even those professionals have caused distress to students. So, training accountability is really important. Also, I think that detailed reporting of school-based law enforcement interactions is a huge priority. Last week I heard from S P S Collaborative Policing Department, there were forty arrests on school grounds last year. But they were unable to de-segregate the data and tell me if the arrested people were students, parents, or staff. This is the kind of information that needs to be clear and it's to be transparent. Also, can you please prioritize the work with teacher and principal unions? Your collaboration is crucial, pointing fingers is not going to be tolerated. I support the directive of Superintendent Juneau to develop, to Superintendent Juneau to develop black students curriculum. This is also crucial and much needed. Much talk has happened about ethnic studies. In this climate, black studies is not only appropriate but also essential. I also want to close by saying that our communities are watching and it is our intent to hold you accountable to everything in this resolution, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for public testimony is Eli Cortez. Is Eli Cortez on the line? If you've joined by phone, um you may need to press star six to unmute.
Hello, um I'm Ms. Cortez, I'm parent and leader of Latinx group at Garfield High School. I have submitted in writing uh in prior um meetings the testimony of my group of the Spanish speaking parents. The consensus is to keep officers, um we need them not for poli- policing but to build relationships between law enforcement and the community. But if the politically correcting to do is to cancel them, then we need a plan before students go back to campus to keep them safe. Um I ask you to please listen to the people directly affected, the teachers, the students, administration, and the community leaders that live in the communities and the students that attend this school. Because it, they, they are a crucial part of our daily life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for public testimony is Kayla Epting.
Hi, my name is Kayla Epting, I am a parent at Garfield High School. Um I want to start by saying fast never last. I feel the decision um to remove um the school resource and emphasis officers was made in a knee jerk fashion and made prematurely. While I absolutely agree we need police reform, um I don't think it is um responsible to throw things out before we've replaced them or attempt, um or an attempt has been made to reform it. I believe making adjustments like having them dress in plain clothes and not carrying lethal weapons on campus would have been a better um way to start. I also believe that these choices should be data driven. Using statistics on if our S R Os and our S E Os have excessive force complaints or instances of biased policing. Have they abused their power in our school environment? Are there overwhelming complaints about their behaviors from students and staff? Have we seen a reduction in behavior um that we felt warranted when their presence was first requested? Um do our S R Os and um S E Os love being in our school? Um do we have a developed criteria for how we pick the S R Os and the S E Os that serve in our, our school population? I think that these things should have been fleshed out before the decision was made and I am confident that the deep work required to make such a decision was not done beforehand. Um S R Os and S E Os provide a vital link between um departments and community. Um I will end with this thought, if a situation with a child or your child arose where law enforcement needed to be called to their school, would you prefer an S R O responding who has a relationship with your school community or a random cop with an unknown history and, and no working knowledge of the school community? I don't want to discount the trauma suffered by communities of color. Up the hands of law enforcement, but I know that the way forward requires healing, conversation, and actions on both sides. Um we can't do the work independently, it has to be a collective effort.
Next up for public testimony is um Lu- Lucia Ramirez Levi- Leviass, sorry apologies for pronouncing.
Hi, this is Lucia Ramirez Leviass. I don't believe that children should be policed in their schools, as a mother of children of color, that's a terrifying thought. However, I also don't think that the voice of the students and the families that have resource and emphasis officers in their schools were engaged in a meaningful way prior to the superintendent's decision. I am the mother of two boys who identify as black and Hispanic, one at Aki Karosi and one at South Shore. Until I started looking into this issue, I thought that every Seattle Public School had a resource officer. Discovering that they are only in the schools where there are majority children of color is unsettling. But I wanted to tell you about my students' experience with Detective Lucas and Detective Roberson because I am not sure this view has been heard. Both of those officers are assets to our schools and have a meaningful and positive relationship with the children, including mine. As far as I know, they do not play any sort of role in a disciplinary policing manner in our school. In fact, I understand that they have been involved in de-escalating conflict in the school. They are members of our community and they are black. Detective Cookie is not a resource officer, but she runs a chess club for fifth graders that was hugely positive for my older son. The community recently built a park in the Rainier Beach area in recognition of her work in schools and communities. That is why this issue is so complex and requires nuanced and thoughtful consideration from students and families in relationship with these officers. Will Detective Cookie be allowed into the school next year to run the chess club? Can Officer Roberson come to Aki out of uniform next year and still run the Lunch Flag Football League at Aki? These are questions that my children will be asking and I don't have clear answers. I ask that the school district ensure that meaningful engagement with the students and families in these schools is captured. It is our kids and our community that's impacted by this decision because those are real relationships that exist in our schools. As a mother of black children, I do have deep concerns about policing schools, however, this issue is complex and deserves meaningful and nuanced attention, thank you.
That concludes the list of public testimony signups.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones, and thank you to all of our uh folks from the public and from our community and uh and our neighbors for speaking up and speaking out today. Greatly appreciate you joining us. So, that concludes our in-person public testimony meeting. We will now move to items, uh excuse, we will now move to the action items on today's agenda. As we move through these items and later the introduction items, I will first call on committee chairs. Then I'll call on the remaining directors alphabetically for questions and comments. And if I could provide one small suggestion to my fellow directors, uh just a little bit editorializing here, given the large agenda we do have today, my suggestion would be to please reserve your time for new comments and questions. Repeating gratitude, comments and concerns may, might mean we'll have a longer meeting today and there are plenty of introduction items to work through. You are your own director, so take that as you will, but I am sure it will be welcomed by all. So, we'll now move to action item number one, resolution two zero one nine two zero dash three eight. Affirming Seattle Public Schools' commitment to black students. This came through the executive committee on June tenth for approval. Can I have a motion for this item, please?
This is Director Hampson.
students go back to campus to keep them safe. I ask you to please listen to the people directly affected, the teachers, the students, administration, and the community leaders that live in the communities and the students that attend this school. Because they are a crucial part of our daily lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for public testimony is Kayla Epting.
Hi, my name is Kayla Epting. I am a parent at Garfield High School. I want to start by saying fast, never last. I feel the decision to remove the school resource and emphasis officers was made in a knee-jerk fashion and made prematurely. While I absolutely agree we need police reform, I don't think it is responsible to throw things out before we've replaced them or attempt, or an attempt has been made to reform it. I believe making adjustments like having them dress in plain clothes and not carrying lethal weapons on campus would have been a better way to start. I also believe that these choices should be data-driven, using statistics on if our SROs and our SEOs have excessive force complaints or instances of biased policing, have they abused their power in our school environment, are there overwhelming complaints about their behaviors from students and staff? Have we seen a reduction in behavior that we felt warranted when their presence was first requested? Do our SROs and SEOs love being in our school? Do we have a developed criteria for how we pick the SROs and the SEOs that serve in our, our school population? I think that these things should have been fleshed out before the decision was made, and I am confident that the deep work required to make such a decision was not done beforehand. SROs and SEOs provide a vital link between departments and community. I will end with this thought. If a situation with a child or your child arose where law enforcement needed to be called to their school, would you prefer an SRO responding who has a relationship with your school community or a random cop with an unknown history and no working knowledge of the school community? I don't want to discount the trauma suffered by communities of color.
Thank you for including your remarks.
Up the hands of law enforcement, but I know that the way forward requires healing, conversation, and actions on both sides. We can't do the work independently, it has to be a collective effort.
Next up for public testimony is Lucia Ramirez-Lavias. Sorry, apologies for pronouncing.
Hi, this is Lucia Ramirez-Lavias. I don't believe that children should be policed in their schools. As a mother of children of color, that's a terrifying thought. However, I also don't think that the voice of the students and the families that have resource and emphasis officers in their schools were engaged in a meaningful way prior to the superintendent's decision. I am the mother of two boys who identify as black and Hispanic, one at Aki Kerosi and one at South Shore. Until I started looking into this issue, I thought that every Seattle Public School had a resource officer. Discovering that they are only in the schools where their majority children of color is unsettling. But I wanted to tell you about my student's experience with Detective Lucas and Detective Roberson because I am not sure this view has been heard. Both of those officers are assets to our schools and have a meaningful and positive relationship with the children, including mine. As far as I know, they do not play any sort of role in a disciplinary policing manner in our school. In fact, I understand that they have been involved in de-escalating conflict in the school. They are members of our community and they are black. Detective Cookie is not a resource officer, but she runs a chess club for fifth graders that was hugely positive for my older son. The community recently built a park in the Rainier Beach area in recognition of her work in schools and communities. That is why this issue is so complex and requires nuanced and thoughtful consideration from students and families in relationship with these officers. Will Detective Cookie be allowed into the school next year to run the chess club? Can Officer Roberson come to Aki out of uniform next year and still run the Lunch Flag Football League at Aki? These are questions that my children will be asking, and I don't have clear answers. I ask that the school district ensure that meaningful engagement with the students and families in these schools is captured. It is our kids and our community that's impacted by this decision because those are real relationships that exist in our schools. As a mother of black children, I do have deep concerns about policing schools. However, this issue is complex and deserves meaningful and nuanced attention. Thank you.
That concludes the list of public testimony sign-ups.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones, and thank you to all of our folks from the public and from our community and our neighbors for speaking up and speaking out today. Greatly appreciate you joining us. So, that concludes our in-person public testimony meeting. We will now move to items, excuse me, we will now move to the action items on today's agenda. As we move through these items and later the introduction items, I will first call on committee chairs. Then I'll call on the remaining directors alphabetically for questions and comments. And if I could provide one small suggestion to my fellow directors, just a little bit editorializing here, given the large agenda we do have today, my suggestion would be to please reserve your time for new comments and questions. Repeating gratitude, comments and concerns might mean we'll have a longer meeting today and there are plenty of introduction items to work through. You are your own director, so take that as you will, but I am sure it will be welcomed by all. So we'll now move to action item number one, Resolution 2019-20-38, Affirming Seattle Public Schools' Commitment to Black Students. This came through the Executive Committee on June 10th for approval. Can I have a motion for this item, please?
This is Director Hampson. We move that the school board approve Resolution 2019/20-38, Affirming Seattle Public Schools' Commitment to Black Students. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second the motion, Director Harris.
Thank you. This item has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Harris. This item is on the agenda for introduction and action today. I will start off with just a little bit of background and then co-sponsors direct, and as well as my co-sponsors, Director Hershey and Director Hampson will provide additional information based on revisions and conversations since introduction. So, just to start us off, I am so grateful for the speakers that were able to join us for public testimony today, and I think one of the, probably the most important word that I heard and continued to hear is just how complex this issue really is, particularly as our moratorium on SEOs and SROs captured within this resolution. So, not soon, not soon after the murder of George Floyd and the continued protests, directors, we, we knew we had to do something. We wanted to meet this moment and we felt that, given our really strong strategic plan, we could make a resolution that made some commitments from SPS, and I am really grateful for the, the collaboration with Directors Hershey and Hampson. I will turn it over to Director Hershey for a little bit of more background and then end it out with Director Hampson and then move on to additional directors for comments and questions. So, Director Hershey.
Hey, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic, thank you so much. This was definitely a labor of love from my perspective, thinking about how we can be responsive to not only the innumerate amount of emails that we received, but more specifically our students who have been calling for this change. I do want to give space to the parents, especially those of color who are on the call, who gave us very clear public testimony that these officers in so many respects have really great relationships with the students that are in their buildings. And our district has failed in the past and in some instances in this present to do adequate and robust community engagement in any significant way in many regards, right? So, I, I hear you and I see you and I want to make sure that you understand as we move forward with this, with this policy, that we need to figure out what are the needs that these officers are filling in our buildings and also be responsive to the students primarily from all of these schools who have reached out to us and very clearly said that they do not feel as though they want police in schools, right? What I think we can do in this situation is thread this needle in a specific way. One of the biggest demands that we've heard is that if we are going to take these individuals out of our schools, then we need to replace them with mentorship opportunities in individuals who look like our students. Director Hampson and I have already begun that work in figuring out what that will look like. Before I move any further, I would be remiss if I did not show an immense amount of gratitude from Manuela Sly and Sabrina Burr, Seattle Council, PDSA President and Co-Vice President respectively, for the amount of engagement that they have done around this issue. We need to figure out a way to celebrate them and to show them how much that they are appreciated, because if it weren't for them, we would not have the clear understanding that we do now about the landscape of this issue in our building. So I want to make that very clear and very known. If it wasn't for them, we would not be here. As we move on in thinking about how we move forward with this resolution, I had the opportunity to meet with one of the longest-standing community engagement groups and advocacy groups on the, in the South End that is student-led, named Wablock, Building Leaders of Change. My meeting with them was very, it was eye-opening in a lot of respects, because when initially we had the ban set for one year, or the moratorium rather, set for one year, when I met with this group, again, predominantly student-led, they said very loudly and clearly that a one-year ban was not enough. And I believe, even in an instance when we are at an intersection to where we feel as though for once we want to do adequate and proper community engagement, I felt myself caught in the midst of an equity detour, right? So, I believe that we have a responsibility as a district to be in a position to where if we are taking something away, we need to do the community engagement to figure out what those needs are so that we can make sure that we do not have a student population that feels unsafe. Because in this country, and not only this country, but more specifically this city and in this region, we have normalized the presence of police in schools. And so, it is rightfully understandable that we have parents on this call who are very concerned with not only the safety of their students in the absence of these officers, but also more robustly, the absence of those relationships. Because for many students, principals and educators and parent educators are often not their primary relationship at that school. It's often the instructional assistants, individuals who are serving roles like the resource officers or mentorship roles. Even in some instances, the custodians often have the closest relationships with our students. And as a second-grade teacher, I know this firsthand. That being said, we also have a responsibility as a system to rethink the way that we expose our children to police officers. And I believe that we have an opportunity here to continue to do authentic engagement, figure out what needs and services those officers are providing, and then also do a better job of working with our community-based organizations to figure out a solution to get mentors in our schools that look like our kids. And that's a little bit of background on why we moved away from the initial one-year ban to an indefinite ban, so that we could not only be responsive to the calls of our students and our advocacy groups who have been working tirelessly to tell us very clearly that we need to be heading in a direction that does not involve police in our schools. But then also, we need to find opportunities to answer those questions like were just posed to us. Is there going to be an opportunity for Detective Cookie to come in and continue to do the chess club? Is there going to be an intersection for our officers to come in as individuals, not necessarily in their roles as law enforcement, but rather as community members, and continue to engage with our students in a way that does not have the moniker of police or law enforcement on it, right? So that is on us as a board, and we need to make sure that we are also taking that into account. Very quickly while I wrap up, there are two amendments that you'll notice. One is an "whereas" clause. It is focused around the, calling out very plainly that this is not a severing of engagement with SPD, this is a severing of having police in our schools, right? It would be irresponsible of us to think that if there was not an outside threat, that we would still choose not to engage with the Seattle Police Department. We would not be doing a great job of keeping our, keeping our kids safe in that respect. That being said, we need to have very clear guardrails about what that relationship, or rather, not even relationship, but rather communication looks like. What is the conduct that we are expecting of the Seattle Police Department and when they are dealing with our system as public schools in any capacity? And we also need to have a very clear and adequate definition of what is a threat. And a threat assessment needs to be, and a threat assessment or a threat assessment tool rather, needs to be developed so that we can have very clear language that is student-led and driven and written in the interest and protection of students of color, to make sure that in those rare instances where we do need to have interactions and involvement with Seattle Police Department, that first it's at a systems level, and then second, there are clear guardrails to make sure that we are not further traumatizing our students. The second amendment that was brought forth is going to be our support as not only a board, but as a district, in the defunding of police, right? Another key aspect is that if this motion passes, or excuse me, if this item passes and we remove these officers from our schools, we need to do serious advocacy to our city partners to ensure that those funds go into services that will continue to benefit our students, whether that be directly into finding alternate mentorship and advocacy opportunities for people in our buildings, family support workers, counselors, social workers, what have you. And when we are calling for the divestment of police, it is not only in the instance of saving money for the city, but rather making sure that those funds are rerouted into opportunities to continue to not only support our students, but help build the holistic lives that they deserve in the city in which they grew up. We need to make this action now because our students are waiting and have been waiting long enough for us to actually take steps forward when we say Black Lives Matter. And I feel very strongly that this is an opportunity for systemic change, but at the same time, we need to do everything that we can to get this right so that we avoid taking away anything from a student, especially in the regard of feeling safe, but also ensuring that we are not further traumatizing our students in their day-to-day experiences with Seattle Public Schools. And I'll turn it over to Director Hampson.
Thank you, Director Hershey.
Pina Gigi, tremendous gratitude to you, Director Hershey, to you, Director DeWolf, for joining me and, and doing this work, and then to Manuela Sly, again, and Sabrina Burr for working so hard to keep us connected to community and understanding, particularly as a fellow parent, what concerns parents have with respect to their student safety in a multifaceted perspective or way. And I think that Director Hershey spoke to that really well, but I just want to further emphasize and acknowledge that we do understand the, the, the deep complexity associated with the need for there to be safety measures in place in our schools so that all students feel safe. And I think that what we have attempted to do here with this resolution is to create a response that acknowledges that while that remains the case and is our obligation to retain and actually improve that sense of safety, that we don't, we shouldn't feel that we, we are only able to access a resource that is not only armed in the form of, of police, but is militarized. And so, and so that's, it's just been, it's been a really intense and difficult place to come to honor those, those two tensions. And we haven't fully struck the balance, but, but to be really clear, this is a resolution, so it is our intent and it is our commitment, and then we have tremendous policy work to do in, in engagement with all of you that spoke today, all of those that we have talked to and all of those that we have yet to talk to, to reframe how it is that we bring law enforcement into our school buildings and into our school events. And I think that's ultimately what I want to point to as well that gets lost. It gets lost in, in every single email that we've received is, is the lack of awareness of the extent to which law enforcement is in our children's lives and our schools in a way that has nothing to do with school resource officers or school emphasis officers. It is something that happens when teachers call 911, when administrators call 911. We, we do not have a well-defined or racially equitable and by any stretch of the imagination set of policies, procedures, and relationships that allow us to really begin to stem the tide of the school-to-prison pipeline. And for me, that, that is what this resolution is ultimately about. And it is also about forcing our, our system, our, and the people in the system to, you know, black students are, don't have a choice in terms of understanding white people and white lives, whereas it's an option for, for white folks to not understand black students and black lives. And we need to put a stop to that, and that's one of the reasons why we put black studies in here as well, because that needs to also become a focus. It can't just be a, you know, a protest. It has to become known and, and humanized. And I couldn't be more heartbroken that we're doing this on a day when we've lost one of our own black male students just in the past week to, to gun violence. It's, it's beyond tragic, and I do believe that we, we failed him. We managed to, to get him a diploma, but we still failed in our ability to protect him from violence. So I take that very seriously. I'm, I'm proud of the work that we've done here, but, and I, and I really support this resolution, but I do want to be really clear with the community that this must be the beginning of our relationship with you and determining what the structure looks like so that we can remove the, the, the sort of fear inspector of law enforcement as a way to work through just even the simplest behavioral concerns that, that, that come up in, in our buildings, if in many cases they are even behavioral concerns, because I think that there's a big cultural shift that needs to take place there. So with that, I will, I will pass it on to the next school board director for additional comments and questions.
Actually, Director Hampson, we will move to ask if there are amendments from directors to this resolution.
Yes, this is Director Rankin. I would like to put forth an amendment. I don't know, do I need to make, make a motion?
Yes, you do.
Okay. I move to amend Resolution 2019-20-38 to include reference to another policy and to specifically identify black students with disabilities. And I have the language for that, but I, do I need to have the motion?
Second. Thank you. This, this question mark?
Actually, the, the motion should.
Go ahead, Greg.
The motion should be specific as to the language that is being offered, if, if that could be read into the record.
Okay, so I.
You need to specifically read it out, all the words, yep.
Okay, so, just to clarify, so as part of my motion to amend, I read the language and comments to the resolution as it stands are still forthcoming?
Yes, you need to read the motion and then.
You need to read your amendments.
And then another director can second, and then we will talk about this amendment, and then if this amendment is approved by directors, we'll then move back to the underlying motion for the whole.
Thank you. That's always, I've seen this process many times and it's always confusing.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I move to amend the resolution to include in the seventh "whereas," which is whereas per Board Resolution 2017-18, Seattle Public Schools stands against gun violence and the arming of educators, comma, I would like to add, and per Board Policy 4210, weapons prohibition for adults and visitors, Seattle Public Schools' properties are designated gun-free zones, and, and then the next "whereas." I would also like to, in my motion to amend, including, includes some language about additional disparities in discipline for black students with disabilities. The fifth "whereas," whereas in the United States, black students are three times more likely to be suspended than their peers. Then I would add, and black students with disabilities are further disciplined or suspended for behavior related to their disability at a rate more than twice that of their white counterparts, meaning white students with disabilities. And, and then the original language would continue, in our state. According to the Washington Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, black males and other students of color are disproportionately disciplined at a rate of 6.5% as compared with 1% for white students. And in Seattle, black students and students of color are disproportionately disciplined and removed from the educational environment. I would like to add, comma, widening gaps in access to instructional time and support services, comma, and. As part of my motion, the third addition, I would like to add comes at the down in, be it further resolved that the board commits to by accountably engaging in substantive and substantial family and community engagement, et cetera, et cetera. That first, first bullet point, utilize de-escalation techniques and restorative justice programs which should reduce exclusionary practices and narrow racial disparities in discipline, comma. And then I would like to add, including interventions that address the excessive and desperate, disparate loss of instruction for, for black students with disabilities. And that is my motion.
Thank you. I did hear a second from Director Hershey. So I will call on directors in alphabetical order for questions or comments on this amendment, and then we will move from here to the roll call and then back up to the underlying motion. So, myself, I, if Director Hershey went to second it, I would have, so I'm fully in support of these. Thank you, Director. Director Rankin, for bringing them forward. I will now move to Director Hampson.
No questions. I fully support the amendment.
Director Harris.
Oh, thank you so much. I think I skipped over director comments on the initial motion, but happy to backfill.
Yep, this is just for the amendment.
Excuse me? You said we would be going to amendment, and then we would be going, in any event, with the amendment, fully support it. Thank you, Liza. Appreciate immensely.
Thank you, Director.
We will have an opportunity to address the main motion. Is that correct, sir?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hershey.
Fully support. Thank you.
Director Mack.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Rivera Smith.
I fully support the motion. Thank you.
Any final comments, Director Rankin?
Yeah, thank you. I'm really pleased that, that folks seem supportive of this. I, part of the, something that protects the public from decisions being made behind closed doors, but that is, can be frustrating for board members as the Open Public Meetings Act rule that didn't allow more than three, don't allow more than three people to work on, work on something that's not public. So it was really, really important to me that we got language in here about, specifically about disproportionate discipline and that students, that students who are black and have disabilities face in our system. And I just, I wanted to say that the idea of policing of our students is, I think Director Hampson mentioned, not limited to actual police, that particularly for black students, especially black boys with disabilities, their behavior, their very behavior and existence is policed and reprimanded and disciplined at a really unacceptable rate. And, and they're punished for their lack of willingness or a lack of ability to conform with white patriarchal norms of behavior expectations. And so it was really important to me that we call that out, that the school-to-prison pipeline doesn't start and end with police, that it goes to, at a very, very young age, what happens to, what our system does to black children when their behavior is deemed either threatening or merely inappropriate to a primarily white adult staff. So anyway, really thank, thank you for the opportunity to add this. And it was kind of tricky to get the language to be, you know, mesh with the rest of the resolution, but I appreciate the support and I'm glad that this can be included, particularly with the work that we're doing in curriculum and instruction around the restraint and isolation policy. So, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Rankin. I'll now ask Ms. Wilson Jones for the vote on this amendment.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hershey?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
Amendment has passed unanimously.
Thank you. So now I actually need a new motion onto the underlying item as amended.
I'm, do I need to restate the motion, or can I just move as amended?
You could move as amended.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Thank you for the move from Director Hampson, and thank you, Director Harris, for the second. I will now call on directors for discussion of the underlying item as amended. And we'll first start with Director Hampson.
I'm, I have said my piece. Thank you for the friendly amendment, and we'll, I'll like, we'll move to the next director.
Thank you. Director Harris.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate that. I am very pleased to see this. I am somewhat conflicted because we are being reactionary, given the times, but the fact that we are turning reactionary into proactive excites me greatly. Those of y'all that know me well know that I started my legal career representing incarcerated individuals for several years. Those of y'all that know me well know that day before yesterday was a cause for celebration because the Ninth Circuit turned down the appeal of King County Sheriff's Office for the murder of Tommy Lay. So we get a trial. Recall that Tommy Lay was murdered the night before his graduation from Career Link at South Seattle. And our little firm and our little team have been working really hard, and the anniversary of that was on June 14th, just a week ago. So whatever we can do to increase understanding, to build bridges, to stop the murder of our children, we need to do it, hold hands, messy as hell, frustrating as hell, and get on with it. And I am most pleased. Now, do I appreciate that the devil's in the details? Yes, I do. But we can work through that, and I am hoping that Chief Counsel Narver, with his background at the City of Seattle and in the OPMAs, can help us figure out ways that we get to actually work together without handcuffs on, no pun intended, so that we can communicate more effectively in bringing this information to the fore and actually have change. And I will extend props yet again, even though we're on a time deadline here, to Ms. Sly and Ms. Burr. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you, Director Harris. Next up, Director Hershey.
No additional questions or comments from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hershey. Director Mack?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I deeply appreciate the work of the directors that brought this forward and sponsored this and the comprehensive nature of it, as well as the amendment that was brought forward to highlight additional things that needed to be clearly stated in the resolution. I fully support the resolution. And in particular, I wanted to mention the references to the policies that were, we need to review and the superintendent procedures that go along with those that also need review, because as Director Harris just stated, the devil is in the detail. And how we operationalize our policies in our school buildings is where sometimes things can fall apart. And the section in the resolution that talks about the various policies, if I could suggest, I think a Scribner's error change, so not really an amendment, but the, let me pull it up really quick. The section, there's a, there's a footnote, number 13, that is referenced to a policy, but I think it's supposed to reference to the, all of the policies, because it's not directly to that policy. So in that, let's see, it is the.
It's where it says amend appropriate policies, numbers 3200?
Let's see here. Yeah, it's in a be it resolved, be it further resolved section, and let me make sure I get to the right one. I'm sorry, I'm scrolling and wasn't able to print this out. I ran out of printer ink. But yeah, so it's be it further resolved that the board commits to by accountability engaging and substantive and substantial family and community engagement. I appreciate that a lot. And reexamine and amend as appropriate school board policies. And I think that the footnote, number 13, should be after or on top of the word policy, not on top of 3200, because there's a number of policies that are mentioned here. So, which is just kind of a editing function. And as it was noted here, school-based threat assessment is currently, I think, has been intro'd to the board. And I just want to make note that I have concerns about the superintendent procedures that accompany those not being detailed, and that that policy, I think, references resource officers. So I just want to call to attention that we may need to pull that back if, and have it come through a committee again to review that before we adopt it, because it may need some changes based on this resolution, which I'm grateful that we're talking about today. The last thing that I want to just mention is the testimony that we heard today from parents and community around, you know, how important it is to authentically engage the communities there and to ensure that we are, we're going to have a plan in place to provide the mentoring and supports and all the other things that we need to be doing before the start of the school year. You know, I've heard from a number of community members that, you know, the personalities, the people are beloved and incredibly important from a community perspective. And that, that having that community process as we move forward is just really important to make sure that those voices are at the table. So thank you so much for bringing this forward. I fully support and look forward to moving on and having the vote.
Thank you, Director Mack. Director Rankin?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to thank my colleagues who put forth the work and effort to bring this resolution forward. It's really critical. And, and also to the community members, of course, and especially those who gave testimony today about, you know, that we are calling for an indefinite moratorium so that some of the concerns that were brought up in testimony can be better explored, knowing that it's, it is a more nuanced conversation than yes, police, no police. And the very critical importance of hearing directly from the communities impacted. And thanks to the efforts of Seattle Council PTSA, we've gotten a lot of emails about people's experience and from within the communities that have these, the officers. So I just, on the whole, is so important. And I also just, and, oh gosh, sorry, I just totally lost my train of thought. Oh, I know what I was gonna say. The combination of this, kind of in tandem or in addition to what Director Mack was talking about with the various policies, the combination of this resolution and the threat assessment, or a threat assessment policy that's coming to us later in this meeting has really kind of highlighted the need for us to look at some policies together where they overlap with discipline and behavior and the relationship with, with law enforcement and other agencies. And so I'm hoping maybe that we can make time somehow to have a work session or some kind of, some kind of discussion where we can bring together a bunch of different policies that I think we need to align under this resolution in terms of, you know, this would go to restraint and isolation, discipline, a whole host of things. So that may not be a conversation for right now, but that is something that I'm noticing, you know, things that are coming through different committees all kind of tie together very directly to this resolution. And so as Director Mack was saying, you know, we, some policies will need to be amended to reflect this resolution, but I think that also we need to consider those policies together, not just, you know, making the amendment, or making the changes one policy at a time. And I think that is it. But really important, good work, and so thank you to everyone who's, has and is continuing to support this work.
Thanks, Director Rankin. Director Rivera Smith?
Thank you. I think it was about a month ago that I emailed Superintendent's Office and the board just to share that Dr. Miller and I had had a conversation, at the time it was, the district was looking at terminating that contract with the city's police. And so I just wanted to share that, that it was something that I, I said, we might be getting emails about this. And sure enough, we got a ton. And at the time, you know, I spoke about how Dr. Williams said how it was a valuable relationship officer at a school. And I said how it sounded like something we'd want to grow, not to terminate. But I want to, I want to own that I have evolved on this issue, I believe. And, and I think that's something that's good to admit when we, as directors, can speak about our own evolution on issues. So I, I appreciate the moratorium very much so that it's given us a chance to learn more and to do the community engagement that is necessary for a far-reaching decision like this. But I do very much hear our community and speak about the, you know, the fear our students have of seeing officers in their schools. And the need to take that away, to not put them in that position, because it is real to see, they see TV and they see their families being harmed by police officers and then to just see them in their schools. That, that is a real fear and a real trauma that we want to appreciate and want to acknowledge. But at the same time, you know, as Ms. Sly and Ms. Burr have been engaging with the communities that have the officers, it is important that we listen and we learn and we find a solution together. So I, like everyone else, I really appreciate this, this, this resolution. I look forward to the conversations we're going to be having on it. And thank you to all involved. No further questions. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just want to continue to extend gratitude to our partners and my fellow directors Hampson and Hershey for collaborating as co-sponsors and all the directors for your engagement and really robust conversations around this resolution. So there being no further conversation on this resolution, Ms. Wilson Jones, roll call, please.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hershey?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Emphatically, yes.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you, directors. We will now move to action item number two, approval of the 2020-2021 Superintendent Evaluation Documents. This came through the Executive Committee on May 20th for consideration. May I have a motion for this item, please?
This is Director Hampson. I move the school board approve the 2020 to 21 Superintendent Evaluation Documents as attached to the board action report.
Second the motion, Director Harris.
Thank you, Director Hampson, for the motion, and thank you to Director Harris for seconding. This item has been updated since introduction. At introduction, Director Mack requested that the evaluation introduction documents be edited so that it is more clear there are two goals. Therefore, the attached, the attachments are now labeled Part One and Part Two, and the goals are labeled Goal One and Goal Two. In addition, numbers were added to the summary statement at the top of both introductions to reference the two goals. I'll now move on to directors for any final comments or questions before we move to the vote. And as the Executive Committee Chair, I will start and just briefly say thank you again. I know we had this conversation at our introduction, but thank you to the staff, Erin, Greg, and Superintendent Juno, and all of our partners at SPS for the work on this. And special thanks to directors Hampson and Harris for very, very robust. And special thanks to directors Hampson and Harris for very, very robust conversations over the course of four or five weeks. And so thank you to their just showing up and doing this hard work in the midst of everything. I will now move on to Director Hampson and we'll just move through the list. And, okay, Director Hampson, you're next.
I don't have much in the way of comments, having had a lot of authorship. And I appreciate everyone's input and support in getting these done into a place that was, we hope, robust enough to get us to some solid evaluation next year or at the end of this year. And we'll fully be accountable for any reflection when we get to the end of that, that indicates that we missed something. So I, just to hope that we proceed in a good way. Thank you.
Thank you Director Hampson. Director Harris.
Very, very robust. No question about it. Couple of things I'd like to point out. Number one, it's better than it was. I don't think we're there yet, that we live, we learn. It's a whole hell of a lot better than what we used to do with past superintendents with reams and reams of paper and killed trees. It didn't necessarily really tell us anything at the end of the portal. Two things I'd like to point out and then I will quiet down. The word dyslexic is in third grade reading goal, and I'm very pleased about that. Two, again, I remind us that the Spokane Street Bridge, the First Avenue South Bridge, and our 500 buses south of the First Avenue Street Bridge are going to cause us enormous traffic delays and background. And we have to, A, embrace that and figure out ways around it. It's, I feel a little like Chicken Little and I don't want to be right. In any event, I plan to vote for this. I argued passionately and robustly and I appreciate staff's ability to embrace those arguments. Thank you.
Thank you Director Harris and thank you too again for your fierce advocacy for making sure that dyslexia was in that. And just to clarify for folks, the two goals are high-quality instruction and learning experiences priority. And that specifically deals with third grade reading. The second one is about executive management leadership and with a specific focus on HR transformation. And so I will now move on to Director Hersi.
I think that these are great. I don't have any further comments or questions at this time.
Thank you Director Hersi. Director Mack?
Yes, hi. Thank you for the edits that were provided to create some clarity around that there are two goals. And the narrative and the documents also lay out that underneath each of those goals, there's, well, for goal one, they're termed initiatives and for goal two, they're termed projects. So there's a little bit of confusion in my mind about are they initiatives or projects? But just to clarify from reading through the whole thing, that the rubric that's set up, the goal one is reading and it has four initiatives underneath it related to family community engagement, professional learning, teacher collaboration, and establishing early learning pathways under the third grade reading goal. And under the executive leadership management goal, there are three projects or maybe initiatives under HR that are case management, training videos, and process improvements. And then the fourth one of prepare, be prepared to and effectively lead and manage the district, I think is how it's, the organization. But under that one, it actually has about 10 different points, which I think are important to ensure that we, I'm calling them out here in this conversation, that each of those points inside of that are also important. And I appreciate that they're made here, that these are kind of sub-goals in that in that higher level goal or initiative, I'm not sure what the language is here. But that I appreciate that that's there and that we will be able to refer back to that in our process next year. So thank you for the work on that. Thank you for the edits to the documents. And if there's a way to maybe clarify the difference between an initiative and a project or whether or not that, maybe it doesn't matter, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you Director Mack. Director Rankin.
No, I just want to say a quick thank you to the exec committee and in particular Director Hampson, who I know put a lot of time and effort into making this, as we say, more robust. And kind of, and to better reflect the actual job of the superintendent as opposed to metrics of the district as a whole. So, yeah, thank you. No further comments or questions.
Thank you Director Rankin. Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that we've made it very clear for the public what we are measuring the superintendent's job performance on. I think that would be great, be nice to refer back to these when we get questions and comments from the public. And I look forward to using these next year so we can evaluate superintendent performance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no, being no further questions or comments. Ms. Wilson Jones, roll call please.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. We will now move to action item number three, revising board policy number 6901, capital levy planning, and adopting board policy number 6900, facilities planning. This came to the operations committee on March 24th for approval. May I have a motion for this item, please?
This is Director Hampson. I move that the school board amend board policy number 6901, capital levy planning, and adopt new board policy number 6900, facilities planning as attached to the school, to the board action report.
Second the motion, Director Harris.
This item has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Harris. To directors for any comments or questions for Chief Operations Officer Fred Podesta before we vote. And I also will, as mentioned, we'll start with our committee chairs per item. And so we'll start with Director Mack, who is our operations committee chair. Over to you.
I just want to urge support for these, this revised policy and adopting the policy. This has been a couple of years of work, staff and the board collaborating to bring these forward. Just, I'm incredibly excited that they are finally here to be voted on today and I just urge you to support. And thank you Mr. Podesta, as all the rest of the staff as well.
Thank you Director Mack. Okay, Director Hampson.
No questions for me at this time.
Thank you. Director Harris.
I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Hersi.
None for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Rankin.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Rivera Smith.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add, I know that, grateful for all the work on this and was really appreciative to work with Director Mack and appropriate staff on this. If folks were at our meeting last, on June 10th, we adopted a resolution affirming our commitment to the inclusion of our LGBTQ student staff and community. And one of the policies that connects to that resolution is this one. And so really, really grateful for the, to be able to collaborate with you on that, Director Mack. Ms. Wilson Jones, roll call please.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you and congratulations on the incredible work on that, Director Mack. We will now move to action item number four, extending the suspension of provisions of board policy number 2420, high school grade and credit marking through August 2020. I have a motion for this item.
This is Director Hampson. I move that the school board extend through August 2020 the temporary suspension of identified provisions of board policy number 2420, high school grade and credit marking policy previously approved by the board on April 20th, 2020, as identified in attachment A to the board action report and to be replaced with the grade marking options A or incomplete for the courses that earn high school credits due to the containment of COVID-19.
Second the motion, Director Harris.
Thank you. This has been moved, this item has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Harris. So we'll now move to directors for any comments or questions for Chief Academic Officer Dr. Diane Debacker before we vote. I will start with Director Hampson.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Director Harris.
No questions. Quick comment, I intend to vote against this. I have heard from a great many higher education folks that are very disturbed by our previous vote and I'm nothing if not consistent. Thank you.
Next up is Director Hersi.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Director Mack.
Just also to clarify that I did not support the original credit-making policy and I won't be supporting this as well.
Next up is Director Rankin.
Hi. As the chair of the curriculum instruction committee, this came through us and was also offered as intro at the last board meeting two weeks ago and now is being introduced on action. And I'm a little bit disturbed that there are concerns that are coming up now that did not reach my ears from either the public or my colleagues about it. So, but I will just say that the determination was made that the circumstances and situations surrounding the previous the policy for the spring are still in effect now. And so it made sense to extend that to reduce negative impact on students. And I also want to add that the evidence that we have gotten or the data we have gotten about the policy this spring has been that it was very successful in being, in being followed through as intended to reduce harm. And I will also just state with, in response to concerns about higher education, that the, that OSPI, the whole state is, everyone's grades during during COVID, during this semester, grades around the whole state, there is an indication that it was during COVID-19. And so some districts chose to do an A, B, C, or incomplete. Some, I'm not sure exactly all the variables, but the instructions from OSPI were to not award, to award neither passes nor fails in any case. And so our, our solution to that was to award As or incompletes rather than try to sort out and potentially further penalize the most disadvantaged students by grading them based on circumstance rather than their ability or aptitude or capability for doing the work. And so, yeah, just wanted to, I guess, reiterate that and, and say for the record some what the conversation was in the curriculum and instruction committee and why I support the extension.
Thank you Director Rankin. Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate my concerns that this has to kind of stop here, at least in the summer. I don't want to see us using this for the fall. I, but I also acknowledge that, you know, it's not just us. I think we're one of nine school districts approximately in the state who took this policy, grading policy on. So I also appreciate that there are, that students' transcripts do have the marking signifying that this was agreed during the COVID time. So it's, it's not ideal that we have to make these sort of sacrifices, these concessions to lack of, you know, more engagement and more time. But I appreciate that is what we're going to have to just follow through for the summer and look forward to conversations about the fall grading policy. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no comments or questions. Thank you for the work on this. Ms. Wilson Jones, roll call please.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Nay.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Mack?
No.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Yes.
This motion has passed with a vote of five yes to two no.
Thank you. We will now move to action item number five, distressed school grant. Approval of budget transfer from BTA 4 program contingency and award construction contract K5107, bid number B02206 to Bailey Construction LP for the Cedar Park Elementary School restroom addition project. This came through the operations committee on June 4th for consideration. May I have a motion for this item, please?
This is Director Hampson. I move that the board authorize the superintendent to approve the transfer of $354,477 from the BTA 4 program contingency to the Cedar Park Elementary School restroom addition project budget and authorize the superintendent to execute construction contract K5107 with Bailey Construction LP in the amount of $633,100, including base bid and alternate number one plus Washington State sales tax with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second the motion, Director Harris.
Thank you. This is, this item has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Harris. This item is on the agenda for introduction and action today. So Mr. Podesta, I believe you will be briefing us and then I will move on to directors for questions and comments. Over to you, Mr. Podesta.
Thank you Director DeWolff. This Cedar Park Elementary is a 1959 constructed landmarked building with one set of restrooms in the interior of the building. For the 2015-2016 school year, eight portables were added, you know, significantly increasing the population of the school and, you know, requiring students to go from outside entrances into the building. And is not, students have not been well-supported by that configuration. So this project will add roughly 600 square feet of space to the main building near the portables to allow for easier ingress and egress from the restrooms and additional capacity. And this item is here for intro and action as well as the two that were on the consent agenda. We delayed bids in the spring after the governor's stay-home, stay-safe order because certain construction activities were prohibited. So we didn't really start creating construction bids until early May, opening construction bids. And so we had some projects that we wanted to make sure stay on schedule during the summer. This is one of them and the other two that were before, on the consent agenda for intro and action. And that's why we're bringing it to the board in this manner. before, on the consent agenda for intro and action, and and that's why, um, we're bringing it to the Board in this manner, because summer is here, we need to start work. And that, uh, is all my remarks. I'll be happy to take any questions, you know.
Thank, thank you. We'll start with Director Mack as our Operations Committee Chair.
Yeah, thank you. I don't actually have any questions or comments. It came through for consideration because, uh, uh, some of the details have not been filled in, uh, but the support for the project and and getting these things moved forward, uh, was was clear. Um, and, um, so, thank you, and thank you, Fred, for, uh, covering all that.
Thank you. Director Hampson?
Uh, no questions. Thank you so much. I appreciate that this has a completion date of September eleventh. Uh, we're gonna need every square foot, uh, that we can get, particularly in, uh, bathroom spaces, so thank you so much for making sure this happens.
Thank you. Next up is Director Harris.
Will defeat this. Thank you. Support up.
Thank you. Thank, uh, next up is Director Hersi.
No questions for me. Excited to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hersi. Director Rankin?
Uh, nope, much needed and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Rivera Smith?
Um, yeah, no questions. I'm really excited about getting this going. I, um, I I love me some construction right now. I went and visited the Daniel Public Site yesterday, and it's so impressive to see the work that our Capital Projects teams are doing. Um, so, thank you for this. Uh, no further comments.
Thank you, uh, and I have none here, but thank you to the work of the Operations Committee. Uh, Ms. Wilson Jones, roll call, please.
Director Harris?
Again, please.
Director Harris?
Hi.
Director Hersi?
Hi.
Director Mack?
Hi.
Director Rankin?
Hi.
Director Rivera Smith?
Hi.
Director Hampson?
Hi.
Director DeWolf?
Yes.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move to action item number six, waiver of Board Policy Number Three One Three Zero, Student Assignment and Enrollment with respect to new students to the district who would otherwise be assigned to Mercer Middle School, and an amendment to the Student Assignment Transition Plans for twenty nineteen through twenty twenty and twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one. This came through the Operations Committee on June fourth for approval. May I have a motion for this item, please?
This is Director Hampson. I move that the school board waive the provision in Board Policy Number Three One Three Zero, Student Assignment and Enrollment, that states students shall have the opportunity to attend in elementary, middle, or high school in a designated attendance area based on home address with respect to new students to the district who would otherwise be assigned to Mercer Middle School as their designated attendance area school, and amend the Student Assignment Transition Plans for the two thousand nineteen to twenty and two thousand twenty to twenty-one as attached to this, to the Board Action Report. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second the motion, Director Harris.
Thank you. This item has been, uh, this item has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Harris. This item is on the agenda for introduction and action today, so Chief of Student Supports, Dr. Conci Pajosa, I believe you will be briefing us.
Hi, yes, thank you, and I also have Ashley Davies on the phone to answer questions as well. So just to share some, uh, background information, um, we actually, um, were in talks with, uh, the principal Cindy Waters in terms of some of the overcapacity issues and enrollment issues that have occurred. They've they've experienced some extreme enrollment, um, situations to the point where for the twenty twenty-one school year, Mercer will have twenty-five portables on the school site. Um, and in addition, there's no additional rooms, you know, within the buildings to be converted to classroom spaces. Um, this is, uh, this, there was a need to think differently about what to do, and we believe that this action to waive the student assignment plan as is temporarily for Mercer Middle School is the best action moving forward. There is capacity at Aki Karosi and Washington Middle School to support students, um, moving into those schools during this time.
Thank you, Dr. Pedrosa. Now I'll move on to directors for any comments or questions before we move to the vote. Uh, and, uh, just wanted to say at least my gratitude to Dr. Pedrosa and Ashley Davies, as well as Directors Mack and Hersi and other staff for coming together really quickly, uh, in the last month and a half on this topic and being able to pivot so quickly. Uh, so we'll now move on to the to Director Mack, who is our Operations Committee Chair, to start off our questions and comments.
Yeah, um, uh, I wish I could say I'm happy that this is in front of us, but I'm not. It's it's unfortunate that we're at this, um, situation with a, um, an overcrowded schools and having to make a somewhat emergency decision. Uh, but I'm grateful that we have, we're moving forward with our, uh, board policies that we passed today and, um, the Advisory Committee that hopefully we can get ahead of some of these issues going forward. Um, and we all know that everything's up in the air and going to be challenging for the fall, um, but that still, this is, um, critical for us to to pass at this time in order to, uh, ensure student safety in the building. Um, so, thank you, uh, for all the work, um, and pulling this together and bringing it in front of us.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to Director Hampson.
Um, if you could just clarify the, uh, the new student, um, assignment options, is there any choice or just, um, geographic determination of whether they're going to Washington or or Aki?
I'm gonna allow, um, Director Davies to answer that question.
Good evening. This is Ashley Davies, Director of Enrollment Planning. Um, so new students to the district would be assigned to either Aki Karosi or, um, Washington Middle School based off of where they live. They would get choice just like any other student new to the district, um, to any option school that does have space, though. So, um, Orca, uh, K Eight, for instance, is an option school that is in the area of where Mercer is, and, um, they do have space, so that could be one option, um, that families could also take advantage of.
And then what's the impact on the high school, on the pa- high school pathway?
So there would be, um, no impact on the high school. Um, at this time, uh, the assignment would just be for an alternate assignment at the middle school level. They'd still be assigned to their neighborhood, um, or attendance area high school once they get to that grade level. And there is capacity at that, um, in those areas.
Would they have the option to continue on their new, their assigned for a middle school pathway to high school?
So the middle schools don't feed directly into the high schools, the way our boundaries are. Um, our elementaries feed directly into middle schools, but the high school boundaries don't align with the middle schools.
Right.
Um, so there isn't a direct feeder anyways.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Harris?
Um, I appreciate why we have to do this, but it frustrates me knowing that we knew this was coming for years and we didn't have the bandwidth, or that with staff changes, we were not able to change elementary feeder schools away from Mercer, who has been completely slammed for years. We knew it, and we knew we had room in other schools. So it's a disappointment. Um, I'm hoping that the facilities, master planning, task force, whatever it is that we're calling this, that we are looking out for several years in advance, and the good people that we have in the seats presently that are planning for years in advance. We don't end up in this situation again. I'm I'm disappointed in us, but we're doing the best we can, and, um, onward. I will vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. Director Hersi?
I'm just thrilled that we got to a place to where we could, um, find a solution that in the short term at least alleviates a little bit of this struggle, our educators, administrators, and all of our other, uh, hardworking employees in that building specifically. Uh, we will need to find a more long-term solution for this, and I'm looking forward to having those conversations and to the robust community engagement that it's gonna take to make sure that whatever decision we make is a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hersi. Director Mack? Uh, excuse me, Director Rankin?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I mean, I have some of the same concerns, uh, related to the questions that Director Hampson asked. Um, I don't, I don't think there's a good, s- good solution, but I I would expect that when it comes time for students to rise to high school, that, uh, there are gonna be some, um, uh, frustrations or disappointments about what what that outcome is, which is not to say it has a impact on this this item right now, but I'm just, you know, I think, uh, you know, there's there there is drama and upset when, um, the perception is of not being able to continue in a in a cohort with your with your peers, even though, uh, as to Ms. Davies' point, the the high school, high school pathways don't necess- or high school boundaries don't necessarily align with middle schools, but I'm just throwing that out there. The other question I have is if some students are going to Washington and some, uh, so I I was not able to, I had, um, another director, uh, attend the the June fourth meeting in my place where this was discussed, because I wasn't able to be there at the ops meeting, but, uh, was there any discussion or or is there a I I'm wondering about students being assigned to Washington versus, um, Aki and if, uh, how how it will be, if we've thought about how to make sure that students understand, um, the programmatic differences and and TAF and what that means for their student and, um, et cetera.
Sure.
Sorry, that was a long way of saying, I sense there's drama, have we thought about it? Or I sense a potential for drama, and has it been considered?
Well, I'll just speak that I know that Ashley's team is, um, and especially in the admissions office, one of the things that they will do is they work really closely with the families and making sure that they're understanding, because this is more for new families registering into our system, and so, um, we can work with our teams to just sort of work through some of those those situations so they understand, um, the programming, and we can work with, um, um, the manager, Ms. Manu, to just make sure that, um, the team is equipped to ha- uh, answer those questions and and work with Ashley to to get those questions answered. But, um, yes, it might be a challenge, but for some of our families coming in, they might be really excited about that opportunity, too.
Absolutely, I agree.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director Rivera Smith?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have none at this time as well, uh, and just again, thanks for the work on this. Uh, Ms. Jones, roll call, please.
Director Hersi?
Hi.
Director Mack?
Hi.
Director Rankin?
Hi.
Director Rivera Smith?
Hi.
Director Hampson?
Hi.
Director Harris?
Hi.
Director DeWolf?
Hi, hi.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, directors, we now have ahead of us twenty-six introductions, excuse me, twenty-four introduction items. So I'm just encouraging us, we have about an hour left scheduled for this call. Uh, minutes will likely not be as nuanced as the seconds or the or the repeat gratitudes, I just want to encourage, um, really the burning questions and comments. Uh, so I will move to item number one, which is amending Board Policy Number One Four Three Zero, Audience Participation and Board Procedure, One Four Three Zero BP, Audience Participation. This came through the Executive Committee on June tenth for consideration. Chief Count, Chief Legal Counsel Greg Narver, I believe you will be briefing us.
I will. Good afternoon, Greg Narver, Chief Legal Counsel, and I'll try to get the many intro items, uh, moving right along. This came, uh, to Executive Committee on June tenth for consideration because there were a couple of possible amendments discussed, and I'll I'll get to those in a second. What I want to do first is just clarify what is in this, uh, bar in terms of proposed changes to Policy fourteen thirty and Board Procedure fourteen thirty BP. Uh, the first thing this does, and this is something that's been under discussion for a long time, but got put on hold because of the COVID necessary and routine restrictions for a few months, but it's finally moving forward. The first thing this bar does is just try to clarify the process a little bit for how the public can sign up for public comment and how we administer it. Uh, among the things it does, it recognizes that board meetings won't always fall on a Wednesday. We had a situation, I know, with a religious holiday at one time that required holding it on a Tuesday. That's, uh, reflected in the new Board Procedure. It clarifies the signup process and the information that we ask speakers to provide to us, and it provides some clarification on the slots we reserve for student speakers as well. The other thing we do is, uh, reorganize a little bit and provide some clarity on the guidelines that we provide for public speakers. When we make our podium available to the public, it's called a designated public forum, we are allowed to put reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on speech, like time limits and number of speakers, but for the most part, uh, we we really don't, can't restrict very much what people choose to say. Uh, and so what I wanted to do was, uh, make sure that our guidelines were consistent with the principles of a designated public forum, and I used as a guide the WASDA model policy, and what we have in the proposed changes is a lot closer to what WASDA recommends. The key principle for us always is that we have to be content neutral. We can't discriminate, uh, based on viewpoint if we don't like a speaker's point of view, and we can't provide favoritism either. And I've now included in the Board Policy an explicit recognition that while we may hear a lot of speech that's negative in tone, we will always remain content neutral in terms of allowing it. We do provide a bullet point list of a few items of types of speech that are not protected under the First Amendment, uh, things like inciting illegal acts or violence or so-called fighting words. These are far and few between, and in the meetings I've been attending since September, I don't think I've, we've certainly heard some direct speech, even some offensive speech, but I don't think I've heard anything that would have actually mandated the Board President terminating somebody's speech. So that's what's in today's bar. At committee, there was discussion of a couple possible amendments. One director, um, proposed that a, uh, a robust, uh, equity analysis be done of the time uh, we allowed to speakers and how many speakers we have. That's a really important issue. It's one that, just given everything going on, we really didn't have time to conduct before, uh, before this vote was taken. A couple of other directors made the really important point about can we reserve certain speaking, uh, spots for particular agenda items, because maybe if we have twenty-five speakers, twenty-three may speak to the same item, and given that the purpose of public comment is to help inform the Board's decision-making, um, you might want to hear about a wider range of topics. That's an important point. It's also a pretty tricky one in terms of the law. It needs a careful analysis, and it's just nothing, at least I have been able to turn my attention to yet. This is a way of saying, um, while it's up to the Board what amendments they want to consider and when, I think with those types of amendments, we'd be better off giving them the analysis they deserve and maybe bringing this back up in the fall, but I think in the meantime, it makes sense to, uh, handle these clarification issues. Um, I think that's, those are the only remarks I'm gonna be making, but I'm happy to answer any questions about this bar.
Thank you, Chief Legal Counsel Narver. Uh, we'll move, uh, to to directors for questions and comments. As the Chair of the Executive Committee, I have none, but just do want to reiterate both my thanks, but also, um, that I hope we can come back to this, because I think what this does is really provides and provises the container for our audience participation, and to your point, it doesn't add anything with with respect to extending our time or thinking about zero zero three zero or strap plane having priorities, so I ask my colleagues to, um, come back to those ideas after we have some community engagement and some legal analysis, uh, around those challenges. Um, so Director Hampson, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, thank you, uh, so much, um, Mr. Narver, for for, uh, doing this work. I I think it's really important. I, uh, despite not having
having anyone speak to it today, in our public comment, I do believe it's something that, that is of great interest to those that would like to advocate on behalf of their, their student communities. And I think the, the, the equitable access is really my primary concern when you're talking about a public speaking forum as, as you indicated, and getting beyond two minutes and how we can do that and still allow a lot of voice. I think my preference would be three minutes, and that seems like a tiny change, but it would have pretty major implications. So I'm looking forward to having more discussion about, about that, but otherwise, I think that it, it strikes a good balance in terms of being clear about what people can and can't say. It's a pretty restrictive moment for us, and I think it, it just goes to the fact that we need to find more ways to reach deeper into community to, to get input. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Harris.
Big, big breath and swallow here. This wasn't delayed just a couple of months because of COVID. This has been on the agenda for several continuous months. I well appreciate that the First Amendment slippery slope issues are, are messy, are difficult, that our previous policy was just waiting for us to get sued. And thank you, Mr. Narver, for wading through this morass to get us here, but I do want to correct record, and it's not because of COVID. This has been out there for quite some time. Second, First Amendment is, I think, dear to all of our hearts, but messy and difficult. And people have a right to say what they say, and they have a right to say who they want to say it to. And for our district to narrow those rights is, is very distressing to me. The other issues that, that come with this, I agree with Board Member Director Hampson, that we really ought to go to three minutes. There is a very long history of that years ago, and there's also a long history of having our meetings after work in the evening when people can potentially participate. The last issue that we talked about, and I was understanding that staff was going to bring up some ideas here, is to set aside a certain number of slots to talk about race inequity and white supremacy. Again, that's been discussed months and months and months, and I'm hoping that we can do that so we can put our effort and admittedly our time, and these meetings are long, and they're going to get longer, but, but we need to put our time where our mouth is. Thank you so much.
Director Hershey.
I didn't, I don't have any additional statements. I think my sentiments are covered in all of the comments that were just made, so in the interest of time, I'm going to go ahead and pass.
Thank you. Director Mack.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Mr. Narver, can you clarify, I was reading through the edits and the changes, can you clarify the, the, whether or not speakers need to speak to agenda items and whether or not they're ordered? Did that get taken out entirely? Because the previous policy had a, if you're speaking to action items, you would be placed first, so therefore it was kind of a more pressing, and then intro items later. Is that all removed now?
That's not in here. That, again, gets into some of the, the tricky issues about, we, we can require that you speak to items on the agenda. There's plenty of case law supporting that idea. In terms of dividing it between intro and action, that's not something I, I dealt with. I, I have not changed anything about that. Whatever I'm dealing with, whatever changes we proposed to the existing policy didn't, didn't remove any prioritization like that. It's, well, the term slippery slope has been used. It's a very slippery slope on some of these things. Once we start saying, we want to hear about this, but not about, or that this gets priority over that.
I apologize, and maybe I just am having a hard time reading it. So is that prioritization in the policy now? Because I thought it was, or is it, it wasn't there before and you didn't, or I, I just, just clarification, is there a prioritization in the policy of order of action items versus intro items that can be?
Greg, I can speak to that if that would be helpful.
Sure.
This is Ellie Wilson Jones, Director Policy and Board Relations. Yes, Director Mack, that prioritization process is retained in Board Procedure 1430BP. There's a paragraph that begins with "at noon on the day before the board meeting," and then it speaks to the prioritization process, which is that people speaking to action items are prioritized first on the list, then those speaking to introduction items, followed by those who would be speaking to other, other topics.
Thank you. I, I knew I didn't change it, but I couldn't remember if it was in there or not.
So it's, so it's not in policy, but it is in procedure. How does that fit with the policy of not prioritizing? Mr. Narver, because I'm confused about whether or not we're, we're being consistent here between what's written in the procedure and what's in the policy.
The, what I want to be clear on is what's prohibited is viewpoint discrimination. And when I'm talking about whether we set aside particular topics like the strategic plan, equity, things like that, which by necessity removes other things, whether that's going to be viewed by courts as a form of viewpoint discrimination as opposed to what's permitted, which is directing that speakers speak to the agenda. That's just an analysis I haven't had the time to do yet. I, I think what we have here is fine, but what we can't do is, is say, we want to hear people who are going to speak in a favorable way about something versus an unfavorable way. And we also have to consider a state law that requires an opportunity for oral public comment before policies are adopted, and so that we'd need to make sure we're not moving out people who want to speak to, and, and those would be action items, so that's okay. That, that's just when we get into the topic of, are we going to move, moving some speakers up and others down, I, in general, is okay because we are allowed to focus things on our agenda to help the board. We just have to be careful that none of that is going to be construed as a form of viewpoint discrimination. That's what I want to be really careful about. I don't think there's any consistency here, but I think it's just something to be very careful.
Thank you, Greg. And Director Mack, I would just encourage any other questions to, to Chief Counsel Narver and CC the board in case anything else is not clear. So thank you. Director Rankin.
Um, no, I, I will, I, I have, I could make comments, but I'm going to, since this is for intro, I'm just going to say thanks for the work, and I'm glad we're puzzling over this, and I will reserve for another time.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director Rivera Smith.
Oh, yeah, likewise. I will hold the comments. I know we're running behind here, but I appreciate the work, and I'm excited that we're going to keep looking at this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to introduction item number two. It is 3:18 PM. Approval of Contracts for Development of the New Seattle Public Schools Websites and Ongoing Website Hosting Services. This came to the Audit and Finance Committee on June 8th for approval. Chief Public Affairs Officer Carrie Campbell, I believe you are briefing us.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Yes, Carrie Campbell, Chief Public Affairs Officer. Today, I'm introducing a bar that if approved will authorize Superintendent Juno to execute two contracts. One contract with Domain 7. Domain 7 will lead design, content management, system configuration, content migration, and staff training for new internal and external SPS websites. And the second contract with Pantheon, who would provide ongoing web hosting and security services. The total cost for the two contracts is $831,577 and would be funded by Bex 4 and 5. Contracted services outlined in this bar are through 2021, '22. Our websites are our most used communication channel with over 25 million engagements annually for the district pages alone. Over the past two years, we've had significant disruption to service, and in some cases at really challenging times, including during snow days and when we announced school closures related to COVID-19. When we analyzed our current content management performance, so our websites, and supports for families furthest away from educational justice, so analyzing data from Title I schools, the 13 priority literacy schools, as well as schools where we have a higher percentage of English learners, it became clear that our families aren't receiving the highest level of service that they could. Families who use a mobile phone or free internet to access their websites experience much slower page load times. And in addition, schools who have a higher percentage of students who qualify for free redo, students of color or English learners, are less likely to have regular updates to their websites, their school websites. And this is defined as at least one update per month. Our school web editors have consistently said that our current content management system, School Messenger, is cumbersome to use. It's now been a decade since Seattle Public Schools has actively solicited for a new website CMS, and with the new strategic plan, Seattle Excellence, and a commitment to better serve and support students and families of color who are furthest away from educational justice, it is the right time to make this change. Engagement for this project was conducted in two phases. Engaging with staff and volunteers and the selection of the content management system, so that's the platform in which the websites are developed, was critical to our future success. As a reminder, we use a distributed web management approach with over 500 web editors, and this is supported by three central office staff. During Phase 1 engagement, a series of workshops, one-on-one interviews, and focus groups were held with central curriculum managers, school web editors representing all grade levels, and parent volunteers who edit the websites at the school level, department web editors, and web editors at the 13 literacy priority schools. Pain points, challenges, and preferred supports were surfaced during this engagement and informed the first RFP round for a new CMS. Feedback included that the new CMS needs to be intuitive and easy for everyone to use, support mobile-first design, and provide automated auditing for things like ADA accessibility. Platform demonstrations and six in-person usability testing sessions were conducted with various stakeholder groups, and the team received 35 survey responses and overwhelmingly staff and parent volunteers preferred WordPress, which is an open-source content management system. Because WordPress is an open-source CMS, the team then needed to put out another RFP for a web developer and hosting service. The bar in front of you today are for those two contracts. The engagement criteria gathered in Phase 1, including criteria centering families furthest away from educational justice, then created the foundation for the second RFP. Technical experts from multiple central departments, including DOTS, the SPS web team, and the project manager reviewed 12 responses. This team selected Domain 7 and Pantheon as the final vendors. Domain 7 was selected for their focus on mobile-first design. As a reminder, I've talked a little bit about this before, 70% of our families in the 13 literacy priority schools access our webpages using their mobile phone, ease of use, including a clear backend dashboard and editing tools, demonstrated commitment to end-user design and ADA accessibility, a flexible platform that can meet the unique needs of all grade bands, and demonstrated understanding and experience engaging and building sites to reach and support families and students furthest away from educational justice. Pantheon was selected because of their strong security and evidence of rapid and automated responses to issues, issues like errors, downtime, which is what we've been experiencing a lot with our current content management system, and security vulnerabilities. If this bar is approved, the two contracts will be executed, and we will begin the migration of web content. We will also begin the third phase of engagement. From August 2020 until the websites are launched, we will conduct usability testing with the community, parents, students of all grade bands, staff, and community partners. User experience research will include web traffic analytics, navigation studies, so really looking at the design of the website to make sure that families and staff and students can find the information they're looking for. And special attention will be given to ensuring families and students furthest away from educational justice are prioritized during engagement and user testing. And in Exhibit A, the contract reference documents included in the bar, you'll see that we've outlined that as an expectation for Domain 7. Staff and web editors will also be supported with a training plan, materials, and support videos. MySPS and the internal sites will migrate first to give staff time to get accustomed to the new CMS and tools. That will be done in the fall. And then the external sites, including all of the school sites, will be completed summer of 2021. I'm now ready to take questions from the board.
Thank you, Carrie. We'll now move to Audit and Finance Committee Chair Hampson, and then I'll move to your directors for questions and comments.
I just want to say thank you so much. I know this is a really long time coming and must have just been tremendously frustrating to have to begin this entire COVID shutdown and need to have that next-level web presence and, and not be able to move forward. So congratulations on getting to this point. I fully support this and appreciate all the work, and I know it's going to create another level of, of communication for us. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Director Harris.
I could not be more pleased about this. Huge props to all of the interdisciplinary intersectionality teams. Huge lift, critical lift. Happy to have heard about it in great detail in Exec Committee. Go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. Director Hershey.
No questions for me. Let's keep it rocking. Good job.
Thank you. Director Mack.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Rankin.
I'm so excited about this. I did not have questions. I just have much support and enthusiasm and gratitude that we are going to be able to move this forward.
Thank you. Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. No, deep, deep appreciation. No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have none at this time as well. Carrie, thank you for the work. Okay, move on to item, of course, okay, no, I'm, move on to item number three. We are 1/12 of the way through our introduction items, and it's 3:26. This is introduction item number three, University of Washington Experimental Education Unit Interagency Agreement to provide special education services to students with individualized education programs, ages 3 through 6. This came to the Operate, excuse me, Audit and Finance Committee on June 8th for approval. Dr. Pedrosa, I believe you will be briefing us.
Yes, hi, thank you. And I was going to say 1/12, okay. Just to share that this is the EEU contract. This is the annual bar that is presented for approval every year. The contract would provide special education services for up to 42 preschoolers and 16 kindergartners for students with IEPs during the 2021 school year, as well as technical support and training for the Early Learning Department on inclusionary practices. These are services that Seattle Public Schools does not have the ability or staffing to offer, and we are required by law to meet the needs of IEP students, of all our students. And I just want you to note that the contract does include that increase of kindergarten slots from 15 to 16, and that, and that we, we recommend that we improve this contract.
Thank you, Dr. Pedrosa. We'll start with Director Hampson as our Audit and Finance Committee Chairperson.
So yay, EEU. And having said that, this is something about which, other than the pride with which we were able to bring this through Audit and Finance as a continuation of this incredible relationship, I'm going to pass it, I'm going to actually defer to Director Rankin, if I may, to talk a bit more about this because she's, her own children have attended there, and she knows about this organization, this relationship very intimately. You're up, Liza.
Oh, I was like, is that now? I obviously was not prepared for that. Yeah, no, I am always excited to see the EEU come through for services. Yeah, like Director Hampson said, both my children had the great opportunity of attending the toddler program, the preschool program, and one of my children was there also for kindergarten, and they were students there with and without special education services. And the, the EEU is a tremendous, tremendously wonderful place that I would love to see, not only, you know, not only, you know, our students' families have access to, but also just continue to promote their work. And I would really like people to understand what an incredible resource we have here. And when we talk about inclusion and we talk about possibility, we don't have to look around and wonder what it would look like. We have this incredible early learning facility here right now in our city, about two miles from where I'm sitting right now, and, or three. But it is, I know at one point in the history of SPS, it was described as having, by somebody who's no longer with the district, as being just full of too many bells and whistles that we couldn't possibly replicate. And for anybody who's been in the building, there are no bells nor are there whistles. It is extremely basic, basic structure in some old mid-century building, but it's the people and the values and the focus on the whole child and bringing families in and including children with a wide range of ability and disability, and showing that they can learn and grow together. And it is a, obviously tremendously special place to me and to a lot of our families. And they, I would love to see us strengthen our partnerships, something that they do extremely well, is when you have a very young child and newly diagnosed disability, it is terrifying. You wonder, you know, the vision, the life you imagined for your family, for your kids, there's an actual sense of mourning and a sense of loss, depending on the severity of the disability, of course, and other circumstances. But the fear and uncertainty of wondering what your child's future is like is something that is really hard for people who haven't gone through it to understand, and I've gone through it to a very small degree compared to a lot of other families. But what the EEU does is really teaches families to advocate for their child and be engaged in their education and welcome them into participating in that process. And so they not only are welcoming and inclusive environment, but they also are a wonderful model for bringing parents in to teach them how to participate, what services to connect to, and how to navigate the educational system with a child with disabilities. And then, of course, the wonderful, wonderful thing it provides for our children is a place where they are all included and loved and valued. And so, yes, I could go on, but I won't. So this is just hugely important, and thank you, Director Hampson, for giving me this moment to get all sentimental about it. But anybody who's listening and all staff, everything we do to strengthen that partnership is going to be supported by me, so.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Okay, next we'll move to Director Harris.
My, what a difference four and a half years make. One of our first board meetings was getting rid of the EEU. And perhaps sometimes we need to be scared to lose what we have to recognize its value. But ever since that time, we've heard from staff, admittedly staff that is overwhelmed, staff with limited bandwidth, that we can do and lift up such a program ourselves, and we've not gotten there yet. And most of us know as well that the EEU is extremely limited, and we turn away dozens and dozens of children. And I cannot echo as much what the good Director Rankin has to say, and I can think of 20 children whose lives were catastrophically changed for the better because of the EEU. I'm pleased to vote for this, but I really want to see this on our work plan so that we can deliver those services ourselves, or we can expand this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hersi.
This is critical. Let's move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mack.
No, thank you. Ready to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin, excuse me, Director Rivera Smith.
Don't come back to me.
Yeah, I'm excited. I love it. Sounds great. It's great.
Thank you. Okay, I have no questions at this time as well. Next, we'll move to introduction item number four, Head Start Grant Annual Renewal. This came to the Audit and Finance Committee on June 8th for approval. So we'll welcome Chief Financial Officer Jolyn Bergy to brief us today.
Good afternoon, Director. This bar requests approval for the 2021 Head Start Grant for approximately $5.2 million. This is an annual federal grant that we receive from the Federal Department of Health and Human Services. In the Audit and Finance Committee, we were asked to provide data regarding staff and student ethnicity. This information will be coming to Board Directors in this week's Friday memo. That would conclude my remarks.
Thank you. We'll start with Director Hampson as our Audit and Finance Committee Chair.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that, Chief Bergy. I appreciate getting that info, as that was the primary question that I had in committee as a product of Head Start. I am a huge supporter of this, and I think just wanting to make sure that we're getting these services to students that need them and working hard, as I know.
Please mute your phones.
To make sure that we have representative staff. And with that, I will turn it over to other directors for questions.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Next up, we'll have Director Harris. Excuse me, actually, before we go, I just want to also highlight Director Rivera Smith as our Head Start Program Liaison, and I'm sure she'll have something to say as well. So Director Harris, to you.
I'm good on this.
Thank you. Next up is Director Hersi.
Same here. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mack.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
I don't have any questions. Hugely important. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Director Rivera Smith, our Head Start Program Liaison.
Thank you. Yes, I regret that I have not been able to meet with Director Brown for the last one. We keep missing paths. We're going to be on Friday. I'm going to learn more about our summer programs and next year's programming. Regarding this bar specifically, I had, I did, I already addressed this with her. I have some questions about the inconsistency, about the funding. It's, the numbers don't match up in the different places they're called out. So I will be getting some explanation from her on that later. Just that was a general concern of all of us. Obviously, it's a hugely important program. I'm excited that we're going to be able to expand the full-day classes, and we'll have more to say at the next meeting. Thank you.
Director Rivera Smith, the numbers are actually, I know that they may be confusing. One is representing the 1819 school year, where it says the report for 1920. It's the report that we issue in 1920, but it's reporting on 1819. And then the number in the bar is actually for the 2021 school year. So I did clarify that, noticing the same things.
Great. No, thank you. That's good to know.
Thank you. And I have no questions. Thank you for bringing this forward. So next, we'll move on to introduction item number five, Renewal of Washington Schools' Risk Management Pool Coverage for the fiscal year 2020-2021. This came through the Audit and Finance Committee on June 8th for approval. Ms. Bergy, you'll be briefing us again.
I will. This is super exciting. This bar is our annual renewal for district-wide insurance coverage for the 2021 school year. The expenditure amount stated in the bar is a 20% increase from the 1920 school year due to the risk pool claims that have been coming forward. And it's not just our district, it's everyone in the risk pool that's driving that. We do continue to work with the risk pool to control future cost increases. It is our recommendation that we continue with the risk pool. That would conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Bergy. Next, we'll move to Director Hampson, our Audit and Finance Committee Chair, to kick off our questions and comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this. Thank you to Chief Bergy and Richard Stout, Head of Risk Management. Insurance is a good thing. We need it, and I think at some point, as a board, we can have a bigger discussion about the extent to which being in the field of education is, in fact, a very risky business. And, but I'm grateful that we have folks on staff that are keeping us covered in this regard, and we can always, as a board, it is our fiduciary and ethical responsibility to make sure that we are supporting the mitigation of risks district-wide. So with that, I'll pass it on for questions.
Thank you. Next up is Director Harris.
Well, if this is exciting to Chief Bergy, thanks a bunch. Appreciate that. I want to add that Richard Stout, our Risk Manager, sits on the board of the Risk Management Pool and has for several years, and that matters a great deal to us. This is compliance-oriented and all the things that Director Hampson said, and frankly, we can do better at minimizing risk, and we own this.
Thank you. Next up is Director Percy.
No question for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mack.
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no questions for you, Ms. Bergy. Thank you for the work.
Director Wolf, can I just give one shout-out to Richard Stout as well? He did catch an error that the risk pool had made, and he saved us several hundred thousand dollars, so I just want to give a shout-out. Oftentimes, we have staff in operations who really are making a difference for us every day, and that's one priming.
Thank you, Ms. Bergy.
Thank you, Richard.
Yes. Grateful to have that person on our staff. Next up, we will move to introduction item number six, Resolution 2019/20-37, Fixing and Adopting the 2020-2021 Budget. This came through the Audit and Finance Committee on June 8th for approval. Ms. Bergy, back to you for the brief.
All right. Thank you. This bar would approve the 2021 school year budget of just over $1 billion for the general fund. I would like to note, as requested by the Audit and Finance Committee, we have added information to the equity analysis, including a link to the equity tier methodology. And second, we added more explanation regarding the per pupil expenditures to the electronic version of the budget book as requested. I will now move to the short PowerPoint presentation for the budget. Next slide, please. We'll go over these areas. Next, slide number three, please. So moving to slide three. We have, you can see that this basically talks about where we are predicting to start the 2021 school year with. That's the beginning fund balance, how many dollars in revenue, and then expenditures that we plan on budgeting for for 2021. And you can see, as we've talked about in previous work sessions, we are spending down our fund balance, and we are predicting an ending fund balance of about $54.8 million in the general fund. Now, just recall also that every budget that we have does build in capacity for unanticipated receipts, maybe like federal care spending or other things like that. So there is $30 or $40 million that we do build into the budget for capacity purposes, enrollment increases, things of that nature. Slide four, please. I wanted to, this was a request by the board. Specifically, I wanted to remind us, in these uncertain times that we're building a budget, these are the areas where the board really has flexibility, and this is where those over and shorts really are taken care of. So we know that we have some money set aside for infrastructure. We will set aside the $500,000 for the HR transformation, but we will be using those other dollars as needed for COVID-19. We will also use a mix of the Economic Stabilization Fund. We were increasing it to its maximum. We will use that as needed, as well as then fall enrollment mitigation dollars if needed. We would not be pausing curriculum based on the board's preference, and that would be continuing as planned. So I just wanted to highlight those areas as a reminder of where we left the work session. Next slide, please. The next two slides talk about headcount and just our trend over time. Slide six then moves to AAFTA. So this, the slide that we're currently on has the headcount, which is how many students we physically have. And then the next slide actually talks about the annual average full-time equivalent. So next slide, please. And this shows budget to actual for overtime, and you can see that we are budgeting to be up about 400 or 500 students from this year's actual number for AAFTA. Next slide, please. This slide shows where we get our money from. So it talks about 1819 actual dollars, what we adopted for our 1920, because we don't have actuals yet for this year, and then our 2021 recommended. So you can see that our revenues under the total resources line have increased from 1819, from 951 million to our anticipated just over $1 billion. And then that does represent about a $36 million increase from the prior year. Next slide, please. This slide shows expenditures by state program. This is the numbers laid out in a table. The next slide shows it as a picture. So this will show you the change in regular instruction, which is really general education, and what percent of our budget is going to fund regular instruction or basic education, 47%. Then special education represents about 18% of our budget. And you can see that the next largest would be those support services as part of our budget. Next slide, please. I just want to say that we do have increased costs because of increased labor costs, and we do have some transportation increases in our expenditures. Next slide, please. So we often look at expenditures three ways. The other two slides were by program, general ed, special ed, vocational education. This slide shows them by state activity. So how many dollars are in teaching and teaching support and in the principal's office? So you can see that these are activities that go, the first three lines are direct in the classroom type of expenditures, and then we have the support services for our students, and then we have central administration, which has been holding at about 6% of our total planned expenditures. Next slide, please. This is that same information put into a chart. Next slide, please. This is background information, in case you're wondering exactly what those definitions are. Next slide, please. And this is the third way that we show our expenditures or track our expenditures, and that's by object. So that means how much do we spend on salaries, benefits, supplies, travel, capital outlay? So you can see that the vast majority of our expenditures, just like most all school districts, we're at about 85% of our expenditures are for salaries and benefits for our employees. Next slide, please. And the next slide shows this as a picture. Next slide, please. So just another way to look at it, oftentimes, we get asked about direct services to schools into the classroom. We are at about 84% of our budget directly servicing or directly going to that classroom, which we call direct services, and then there are other support services of about 16%. Next slide, please. Same information, showing that in graph form. The next slide, on slide 17, is a slide that we're required to provide by the state. And this is what's called MSOC. It's our maintenance, supplies, and operating costs. So these are dollars that we are actually funded by the state for various categories and our associated expenditures for them. You will notice that our state funding is slightly more than what we're expecting to spend this year, and that difference will be going to offset special education above what the state is funding us. Next slide, please. The next few slides have high level information for the other funds. This one is for the associated student body. This is for clubs, classes, and athletics at the school level. This is student driven, so students decide what their fundraisers are going to be and what they spend these dollars on. Next slide, please. The debt service fund for our district is very small. We put enough money in there every year to make the John Stanford bond payment. So that's what these dollars represent. Next slide, please. And the capital fund, we've talked about this a couple of different times in other work sessions, where we are planning on spending. We have total revenue of about $332 million, and we are expecting expenditures of about $297 million in the capital fund, with an ending fund balance projected of just under $120 million. Next slide, please. Oh, we didn't get this slide updated, or I'm using, oh, you, we did. I'm looking at my screen. Sorry. So two things that we've provided for information. We have a district wide staff FTE summary. It really tells us how many of each kind of staff that we have. That is page 185 in the budget book. And then we do have school funding allocations that start on page 41, and that is by school in the budget book as well. And I would like to shout out to you, budget staff, who put our budget book together every year, and they do an incredible job of tracking our billion plus dollars. So with that, I would conclude and take comments or questions.
Well, thank you very much, Chief Bergy. Well, turn it over first, our Audit and Finance Committee Chair Hampson.
Thank you, Chief Bergy. I'm going to preempt with a couple of questions that I am just assuming folks are going to have, that they always ask, and for the sake of of those listening or that might watch later, if you could speak briefly to the source of the information for the for next year's student enrollment budgets.
Enrollment planning provides that?
Yeah. No, I mean, we are, or the last round that anyone would have seen came from February enrollment, and it's been updated in June to reflect.
Another 60 kids. We didn't really have any change in June.
Okay. And then the next question, I'm just looking at the slides myself, has to do with, oh, if you could discuss for the sake of the board and those listening, the extent to which we are seeing both COVID expenditures that will, we've already made a lot, we know, but that will that will be part of next year, a moving target, we all realize. But if you could speak to that and also speak to the application of the CARES dollars when they get to us, the $10 million that we believe we'll receive in CARES dollars.
Yeah. So we are slated, OSPI has told us that our CARES Act funding right now is about $10.7 million. As of the end of April, I believe that we were at just over $6 million in COVID expenditures for our district. So I would expect that the majority of the 10.7 will be used up from 1920 expenditures, if there are dollars left. Right now, just for health and safety and PPE, we just updated our projection. We think we're somewhere around $15 million just for extra cleaning, disinfecting, and then PPE for our staff, thermometers, all those types of things that we have to have to open under any model at all. So we are hoping that we will have some savings in some areas, maybe not, probably not enough to offset all of those expenditures. So, you know, that's where the budget flexibility slide comes into play. It becomes important at that point. I will also say that if there is a special session, excuse me. K-12 will be taking cuts. We don't know what that looks like yet.
Thank you. And then I appreciate, I also appreciate the the work that the budget team puts into the budget books. I spent the better part of the weekend with both last year's and and this year's, working with community members to help them better understand their school budgets. So I just wanted to clarify for folks that what, in the context of the governmental accounting standards that that are utilized and the information that we're, that we have, the budgets in the, at the building level are not actuals, but budgeted, even if there was, if you're looking at prior years. And so when you look, you look at changes and how things are budgeted from one year to the next, but they don't necessarily represent all costs, I mean, all sources of funds. Can I say that with authority? Because there are other sources of funds that that come into the school budgets that aren't necessarily represented. PTA grants, that kind of thing.
Yeah, a small amount, a small amount of funding may come after we set the budget.
Okay. And and I think that that is it from my end, so I will turn it over. Oh, I had one other thing that I noticed that. Hold on just a second, that I wanted to to bring up and then for later discussion, that when buildings apply for waivers, the process by which they do that first goes through, requires an approval through the directors of schools. Is that correct?
Do you mean for staffing waivers?
Yeah, there's a whole series of them in terms of, for example, when you get an art teacher, or when you you use your PCP dollars to pay for PE, and then what do you use it for next? And depending on the, per the weighted staffing standard and CBAs, there, the money goes towards certain things. And that waivers for that have to go through a series of of approvals at the, when the building applies for those. But the first line of approval is is the directors of schools. Is that correct?
The first approval is really the 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 central admin, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I'll I'll pass it along.
Thank you, Director Harris.
We don't have enough time for my questions. I've got several, but I'll take those offline. I appreciate Director Hampson addressing the fact that the school budgets are not actuals, but estimated and budgeted, which which I think is misleading. Second, we have got to address the PSA backfill funding and the inequities throughout the city. Third, I appreciate Director Hampson bringing up the executive directors of schools' roles with respect to waivers and changes. Thank you. And thank you to the staff putting all this information together.
Thank you, Director Harris. And we will have also on July eighth is our, our, on July eighth, we will have the budget hearing to go over more of the budget too, for folks, public on the call. Next up is Director Percy.
My concerns have been laid out pretty thoroughly, so in the interest of time, I have nothing to add.
Thank you, Director Percy. Director Mack.
Yeah, thank you. I do have a couple of things, but I'll try to make them very brief. Thank you, Director Hampson, for asking the question about where the enrollment projections come from. I'll just note that the enrollment projection is closer to the actual from a couple of years ago. And so trusting that that estimate is closer than last year's was. And happy to see that. The one question about the enrollment projections, though, that I don't quite understand is the summer school number of 36 students. Do we not get apportionment for the 14,000 stu, 1400, 1400, 14,000?
We do not. Okay. So. You can only claim each student a 1.0 for 10 months. And so if they've already been claimed, they're not qualified for summertime. If there's FTE left over from those students and they take summer school, they can be claimed, that difference.
Okay, so that, so the the summer school costs are coming out of levy funds?
Yep, they're all on us. Well, sometimes we use grant funding, right? We use Title I and LAPA often to supplement summer school. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so a question to the school budgets and the approval process. The BLTs have to approve school budgets. Is that done before this book is put together? So have all the BLTs approved each of the school budgets that are in the book now?
Yes.
Okay. So they say this, yes, we have, we are happy with the staffing arrangement, et cetera. So all the BLTs have approved this book.
That is, that is something they have to finish before we can put the book out.
Got it. Okay, great. Just for clarification on that. And then the last question I had was around what next year is going to look like and the apportionment that comes from the state and everything is based on actual counts done October 1, et cetera. And you have a sense of what impacts might happen if they, you know, if with the, the impacts to actually our revenue and our apportionment from the state, given that we're likely to see a lot of variability in actual enrollment numbers in the fall? Do you have any sense of plans for how districts are attempting to work with OSPI in order to not take a massive budget hit?
Director Mack, I want to be really careful to be specific to the item.
It's about the, I mean, we're, the apportionment from the state is based on enrollment count. I mean, our entire budget is based on revenue. So my question is whether or not, whether or not there's conversation about how to manage that in the fall.
We are having conversations. Yeah. Yep. So two critical things. What happens if enrollment doesn't come in? We're talking to OSPI about that. We also need to have those conversations with legislators. And then the same with the state budget impacts. We don't know what they're considering. We know that they're considering cuts. We don't know what those look like. Again, we need to work with the legislature. So we built this budget without knowing a lot of things that are yet to come. But we are, you know, we're going to, we're going to make it through this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Director Rankin.
Just one statement that I I think that there would be a special session to consider cuts instead of to consider additional revenue is is really shameful and disappointing. And other than that, thank you, Chief Bergy, for your work and for being flexible and consistent and all of that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. Yeah. Also likewise, appreciate the budget book being sent out, mailed out to us. I'll follow up with some, the slideshow here. I appreciate all the clarity of numbers. I really like page eight of the slides, the expenditures by state program, looking at where money goes. And I'm wondering where early learning is represented on that page in those numbers?
I'm sorry, you cut out for me. Say that again.
On slide eight, I'm wondering where early learning is represented in those categories or those numbers.
It would be in other instructional programs generally.
Okay. Maybe I can find out later where I can dive into that that category more, where you can, where I can find information on what that, what that includes in that category. Other, other, other only that, um, I'm trying to figure something out regarding, as we had a community member point out, that the meeting for the budget is like literally right before the board meeting in which we're supposed to approve it. So I'm concerned that that's not really keeping with the spirit of the mandatory public hearing on the budget, since anything, I mean, I don't know how much can change in that minutes between that meeting and the one we vote on it. And it seems, it seems almost unlikely that any real effect can be had from anything we hear at that meeting from the public. I don't know that they're generally this this bumped up against each other. I don't, I think last year there was more time between them, but maybe I'm wrong. Anyhow.
Director, Director Rivera Smith, we, this is tradition, how it's been, as well as we have these discussions throughout the whole year so that we can bring up these issues as opposed to having the whole conversation on July eighth. So I'm hopeful that we can capture all these concerns throughout the year during that process or through our committees, the Audit and Finance being one of them.
I have no other questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Bergy. I I don't have any other questions at this time. Been really grateful for your continued work, bringing us together each month to talk about our budget. We will now move to introduction item number seven for directors. We are one quarter of the way through. We've done six items out of 24, and we are four minutes over time. So we will move on to item number seven, which is approval of contracts for private schools proportional share services, RFQ 03969, to provision of equitable services to private school students eligible for special education. Providers include Hamlin Robinson, Hampton Tutors, Reither, and Spring Academy. This came through the Audit and Finance Committee on June eighth for approval. Dr. Pedrosa, I believe you'll be briefing us.
Yes, thank you. Just to share that this is an annual bar that comes for the board for approval. Seattle Public Schools is required by IDEA to set aside a proportionate share or IDA funds to serve students who have been placed in a non-for-profit private school and are eligible for special education. Students identified for services through the special education evaluation process and that are then placed on a service plan and may access services as determined by the proportionate share process. Those services are available for determined, determined through a set process outlined by IDEA. Just to share a little bit of information about some of the services that actually are utilized through this service. We have a contract with the, the private schools, one-to-one instruction in one academic area, 90 minutes per week could be an example, social skills groups. Sometimes there's workshops related to executive functioning to support teachers and parents. And just to let you know that in addition, we, we at the Seattle Public Schools provide equipment to students with vision, hearing, and mobility needs for the use of their private schools as well.
Thank you, Dr. Pedrosa. We will now to directors for comments and questions, starting with our A and F Committee Chair, Director Hampson.
Thank you for this. No, no questions for me, other than this is a small group of services that we need more of, an absence of having the capacity to provide internally. And I wish we had, I wish we had more of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Director Harris.
Emphatically agree with my colleague, Director Hampson. And it also suggests, and again, aspirational, given our bandwidth issues. If we're working with these schools and they're doing cutting edge work on things like dyslexia, perhaps we could have a trade in terms of curriculum and professional development, et cetera.
Next up is Director Percy.
None for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Mack.
Yeah, is this the first? I don't know that I've seen a contract with Hamlin Robinson in the past. Is this the first, or is this something I just didn't notice before?
Dr. Pedrosa?
So I believe we have had contracts with them in the past. I'm not sure about the contract from last year. I actually have Director Campbell that's online, that she can answer that question specifically in the comparisons in the last few years. Director Campbell?
This is Director Campbell. I am not sure. I don't have that right in front of me, so we can get back to you with that information if they were on the, on the proportionate share contracting list last year, and we can get back to you and let you know.
Yeah, I, I, that's fine, and I appreciate that. I just want to also underscore Director Harris's comment around potentially utilizing some of the, some of these providers to support PD in our schools, specifically around things like dyslexia and dyspravia. So thank you and look forward to getting that information back.
Thank you. Director Rankin.
Nope, just want to echo the comments made by Directors Hampson and Harris.
Thank you. Director Rivera Smith.
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And the only thing I'll say, particularly when we speak about special education, is to just really highlight the fact that the state does not reimburse us fully for us providing for us providing special education services, which our students need and deserve. And that is a shame. Next, we'll move to introduction item number eight. This is approval of the 2020 through 2021 Students, Student Rights and Responsibilities, SRNR. This came to the CNI Committee on June 9th for considerations. Excuse me. CNI means Curriculum and Instruction Policy Committee. Chief of Schools in Continuous Improvement, YF Jesse, I believe you will be briefing us.
Good afternoon. This particular motion is around the 2021 Students Rights and Responsibilities. This is our annual approval of what we call the SRNRs. This particular document helps to give us information regarding the rules and regulations around student behavior as well as the structures and procedures that schools do in response to the behaviors that are exhibited across the district. This is in accordance with the disciplinary laws of the state of Washington and for us has had significant changes over the past five years. This year happens to be one of those years where the state has not moved forward any significant changes, most certainly not like last year. But in turn, what we did do is pull together a student group of 149 students representative across our elementary, middle, and high school levels. And it was really good to get that feedback. And the thing that students really called out for us as we think about these particular rights and responsibilities for our students is around just the relationships that they have with the adults at the school. And I know I heard that in part of the conversation of the previous board resolution that was passed, 2019, 20-38. And then also just, also about the differences or the imbalance in the amount or type of reactions of student behaviors across our schools. And so the feedback was really about not so much around the content of the Students' Rights and Responsibilities, which they highly supported and said were well-written and intended, since that is the work that we've done over the last five years to make sure it's inclusive of student voice and that it's also something that they can understand. But this time it was about truly the implementation. So for us, we know that we're going to continue to move on with professional development to address those. We know that there's a lot of things tied to student discipline. I know I heard that as part of the earlier conversation. But I'd be remiss not to mention that there is a lot of things upstream to help address so that we don't even approach the areas of more formal discipline and that we are building in community, building on relationships, teaching social, emotional learning skills, and most certainly providing an inclusive education. And then in sense of the building community is most certainly building in most restorative practices and engaging instruction. There were some other parts of this that we did make some grammatical changes, updated the hyperlinks that became outdated, and then aligned our language to the strategic plan. We also developed and aligned some of the definitions, as you'll know later on, as I present the new update to the Threat Assessment and School-Based Threat Assessment Teams and our new policy, 3225. And then aligning also this word to the possession or using marijuana, which is the new board policy, 3423. And then that's some of the updates that we have made to the Students' Rights and Responsibilities for this year. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Chief Jesse. We'll start with Director Rankin as our current instructor, Instruction Policy Committee Chair, for questions and comments.
Thank you. Yeah, we had some good discussions around this in our committee. And the, something that I would, I would like to reemphasize, I guess, or just state for the public is the, the discussions that we had around this really, instead of being a kind of a box checking behind the scenes sort of document, figuring out ways to better communicate out to students and to empower students, that this is their, you know, that, that they have the responsibility, that they carry responsibility, but that they also have rights. I mean, I know it's right in the thing there, but it's, I think there's, you know, it, it tends to be a thing that's passed out maybe on the first day of school or there's a link somewhere in a short one-pager and it gets, it gets buried and then an issue comes up and a student or, and their family may not realize that, that this exists. And so trying to figure out ways to kind of educate our, our kids about how this applies to them, making it more accessible. And then apparently the student groups addressed that as well and hadn't had some solutions. So I look forward to that developing more. This goes along a bit with what I was talking about earlier about the need to sort of align things across policies. And yeah, I just, I want to make sure that where we are, you know, deliberately putting equity and updating and addressing institutionalized racism in all of our documents and our practices, that we're really aware of, of the critical importance of our language use and consistency of language use. So saying things like orderly or civil or just terms like that that are pretty subjective and also could be couched in dominant culture as opposed to being more reflective or responsive to the, the many cultures and backgrounds of our students. I don't, I don't know that the Students' Rights and Responsibilities is as much impacted by that desire that I have to sort of look at policies altogether, but it's certainly, anything in there should be reflective in Students' Rights and Responsibilities. But I really appreciate the work and, and the conversations that we had in committee were great and it seems like we are aligned in, in moving forward.
Thank you. Next up is Director Hampson.
Hi, thank you. So I, I guess I would just, to try to keep it short, I do believe that, I, I know the timing of this approval is intended such that it's ready to go in the fall. And I believe that we're probably, depending on how, what we can get accomplished relative to aligning the critical work around policies that pertain to how our students come into contact with law enforcement. And then the forthcoming anti-racist policy, which I think will actually have a substantive impact on this. I'm not sure if we want to consider. And then I also see that there's a threat, you know, the threat assessment definition is in here as well. So from a timing standpoint, I do think that this will be impacted by decisions made in the next couple of months, work that we do in the next couple of months. And I don't know if that means that we just look at this again so that it's revised for next year or that it's revised in real time. It's historically been, you know, the paper document that goes home with students. We're pretty much looking at everything electronically right now. So I just want to put that out there in terms of, that I do think that there will be, I, I don't think that this document passes the test of, of being consistent with what it needs to be in an anti-racist organizational context is, is kind of my final statement. So I think we need to work towards that. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Director Hampson. And obviously that conversation is forthcoming. Director Harris.
I'm good. Thank you. I agree that we have a great deal of work to do. I worry about the bandwidth. I worry about having 27 intro items and narrow opportunity to speak to them in Ledge meetings. And we probably need to unfortunately make our meetings longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hershey.
I have the same sentiments around specifically moving this document toward a more anti-racist focus. I share those concerns with Director Hampson and I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Mack.
Yeah, hi. I mean, my, my question, I think, is back to my fellow directors and staff is, you know, is, do we, do we want to approve this if it's not aligned with the resolution that we just passed? Or do we move it forward anyway? I'm, I'm, I'm just a little curious whether or not we want to have that review before we move it forward. Then that's a question of my fellow directors.
Do we have a time crunch on this? Would be my question. Chief Jesse?
Yeah, this, we, we make these every year. We make an annual. We could, most certainly, I know there's a lot of conversation and I also was obviously heard in earlier that, yeah, we could make more changes, you know, and come into a shorter cycle somewhere in the fall. I know there's a lot of other intersects with other policies and then the anti-racist, you know, procedure that, that, policy procedure that we're moving forward. So we can, we can do that. I think it's just kind of, as soon as that gets landed, we can take action right, right after that to make sure that it lands and coincides with that as soon as possible.
Yeah, I, I would like to suggest that because this is so important and so tied to that and that there are some questions about the language, that we probably should do that work before we finalize it. I mean, I recently read an article that was put out kind of questioning whether or not PDIS is, you know, as a, as a structure, is whether or not that is appropriate or whether or not it's anti-racist. You know, so I'm just, I just would like to have that work done and not just approve it. If, if we have the time to do the work, I'd suggest that we do it.
Thank you. Director Rankin.
Yeah. This is Director Rankin. Again, I just want to echo that, yes, this conversation sounds like it's going along with what was discussed a little bit earlier about the need to sort of look across several documents and be sure that they are supporting and reinforcing each other and very clearly rooted in anti-racist policy. So if it doesn't impact too much.
Director, you are the chair of, you are the chair of CNI. Are you suggesting to pull this today?
What does that, what does the, I mean, it's an introduction item right now. So we're not.
I could make a motion. I could make a motion to refer it back to the CNI Committee to align it with the resolution.
This is just the introduction. So I think we could just pull unless Greg, you have additional ideas.
This would mean that we would hold off. I'm sorry to interject, but I would just say that this means that we're going to use the old document so that wouldn't be the updates. So we can move this forward and then just simply keep, continue to make more updates to it.
That's what I was going to ask. Yeah. Is there, is there a possibility of, what are, I guess, what are the, what are the options for moving this forward and continuing to amend?
I, I think, if I could just add here too, if I could, if I could just add here too, when we think about policies that are not actually policies yet, when we think about 0040 anti-racism, it's technically not a policy yet. And so to make concessions for a policy we don't know in this now, I think, would probably not be smart. But I think it could be updated live as new policies are added, if I hear Chief Jesse rate.
Well, but I'm also thinking about if we're looking across multiple documents that do exist and, and time, you know, work to be done in a possible work session or I'm not sure what. Can we approve this so that we're going for, going from an up, you know, not reverting to last year's but going to this year's, knowing that there may be changes made in response to either other policies or, or the new policy?
Director DeWolfe, can I make a recommendation?
Director Hampson?
My recommendation would be per, per Chief Jesse's comments that, that we can move this forward with, to action item with a specific statement about being able to make a mid-year change, meaning we would have another round of changes after this.
I guess my, my question really is, do we need to make that statement? Or does a procedure exist already in which we would be able to make amendments as needed in the future?
Let's let Chief Jesse jump in here.
Yes. And so on policy 3200, it, it's under the Written Rules for Student Conduct. It's, it specifically calls out the, the school board has to annually approve a Students' Rights and Responsibilities.
And we are. Director Harris.
Thank you so much. And I'm thinking between Chief Narver and Chief Jesse, we can answer this. This is the document that provides the legal basis for all kinds of things. Is that correct? Discipline, expulsion, et cetera?
That is correct. That's what this document covers.
Okay. And in past years, when we've had issues with it, we've said, well, we have to get to the printer before fall. Is that still an issue?
That, that is also correct. We have to update that information and post it as part of the handbook, yes, that we must distribute by law.
Okay. So if we are tinkering around the edges with it sometime during the next year, is that consistent with notice and due process? And I guess this is for Chief Narver.
And you know, I've got Ronald Boy on the meeting as well. And if, if I can call on him to speak to this, I'd appreciate it. Since he may have more, more information on this than I. Ronald, sorry to put you on the spot, but can I ask you to speak to this?
Yeah, of course. This is Ronald Boy, Senior General Counsel. The Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook does include a number of really important due process rights that a student has that are a reflection of the law as to what happens when a student is disciplined. So it details when you are long-term suspended or expelled or any variety of types of disciplines, what does the, the legal process is to have due process and appeal the discipline that you've received. So it's really important that this gets put in place for next year. In addition, this year's updates have a number of changes to the definitions of our discipline codes, which are important to align with the law. And in addition, the, it's really important and it's legally important that the SRNR is translated into our top languages. And because this is a, a significant document as far as the number of pages, translation takes a good part of the summer. So it is, as far as timing, it is really important that we get the translation started so that it can be distributed to students and posted at the, at the start of the school year.
I have a follow-up.
Please quickly.
Thank you. So can we ask that this process be started in December of 2020? So we're not jammed yet again, year after year in June, so that we can align these processes for the next coming school year? May I make an amendment? Thank you.
Can I, it's Director Rankin. As the CNI Committee Chair, may I ask that we move this forward as is so that we don't revert to last year's? But may I request a mid-year or winter review of this one in the coming school year?
Director Rankin, yes, I think to a finer point, Director Harris is, has a great suggestion because I think having this conversation the week before our final meeting feels a little bit rushed. So anything we can do to improve that process by talking about this earlier would be helpful, particularly as, you know, hopefully 0040 anti-racism has passed and obviously needing an update for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Sure. But that doesn't help us right now with this one.
I understand.
Okay.
But there, I'm going to move on to Director Rivera Smith and, no, I'll come back. Director Rivera Smith. If there, I'm going to move on to Director Rivera Smith and, no, I'll come back. Director Rivera Smith.
Hi, thanks. No, I appreciate all the conversation on this. I'm glad that we've taken the time to have this conversation right now, even though I know we're really behind with our meeting. I would, I, I feel like Director Rankin said, it's probably wise to move this forward so we have something that's not the old one in the effect, in effect right now. And definitely more conversations needed. I know for the comments questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So Director Rankin, before we move on, can you just clarify what you're hearing for today? Simplify that back to us.
Yeah, for today, my preference and what I believe I'm hearing is that this, as introduced, move ahead in the usual process so that we do not revert to last year's by default and that we reserve time to reexamine and implement in, in almost real time, any changes from the next few months of work that would impact this policy. And then I am also hearing that the entire process of creating the annual rights and responsibilities document should be moved up in time so that we're not crunched at the end of the school year to approve the following year's document.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, I think SPS, you've heard where the board is wanting to move with this. I would love to move on to item number nine. Okay, we'll move on to introduction, item number nine. Approval of new board policy number three, two, one, one, gender inclusive schools, transgender and gender expansive student rights and supports. This came through the Curriculum and Instruction Policy Committee on June ninth for approval. Mr. Jesse, I believe you'll be briefing us once more.
Thank you. Today I'm moving forward for approval for a new board policy, number three, two, one, one, around gender inclusive schools. This is in relations to a new state law, RCW twenty-eight dot six, four, two, dot zero, eight, zero. This work is, builds off of already the great work that we have done here in the district and in support of the school board. Much of this information is detailed in Superintendent Procedure thirty-two, ten. This provides us an opportunity to shift, create this new policy and a drafted policy, I'm sorry, Superintendent Procedure to Support thirty-two, eleven. This is a, a amazing amount of work and guidance around helping our students, giving inclusivity. And then also just for us to think around issues around student dress, access to spaces and participation for our students and gender expansion of students. So I just, this particular new policy, I think is exciting work for us and especially in light of the recent issues passed by the Supreme Court and I wanted to thank you and I'll take questions.
Okay, we'll start with Director Rankin as our CNI Policy Committee Chair.
I act, I don't have any questions. I'm thrilled with the, the work and support that has been happening around this policy and let's keep it moving.
Thank you. Director Hampson.
I don't think I have any questions. I didn't get any emails or anything on this that I, that I saw. I, I think the only question I have is whether or not we have, I didn't see any partners listed. Do we have go-to partners around this work that would potentially be referenced in the bar or, oh, I said, I guess.
Students, a lot of students.
Just, yeah, students, okay. And then Gelson is on there too, as a, as research. But I didn't know if we had any local partners that we needed to reference.
I'll let Senior Legal, Senior, excuse me, Senior General Counsel Ronald Boy maybe potentially jump in here. I know that he worked on this a lot and we collaborated a bit on the LGBTQ resolution that Directors approved a couple of weeks ago, and this was one part of those kind of policies that were coming in connection with that resolution. And I know Ronald has worked on this, so if he has any background he wants to provide.
Yeah, I would be happy to. You know, this is, this specific policy is, is really more in response to the, the new law, which is great, which requires the district to have a policy in support of our transgender students. As you know, we've offered rights and supports to our transgender and gender expansive students for many years. And those have lived in Superintendent Procedure under our non-discrimination policy. And our procedure is one that is in, I would say, in constant state of refinement. And we have a number of partners in the community that we work with whenever we do refinements. And those are partnerships that Lisa Love and myself have worked on. And there is a, there's a number of transgender groups as well as our student groups in each one of our schools that we meet with on a pretty regular basis to discuss changes that we're considering to our procedure and to get feedback. Our most recent changes to our Superintendent Procedure were a result of a good year and a half of working with students at a number of our schools. And they gave us, gave me feedback as far as what they needed to see in our school. And so every, you know, every year or so, we've been working with, with our partners and our students especially to refine and enhance our procedure. And it really reflects the most current things that we can do legally as well as as far as also, it's a kind of a legal determination when we work on a procedure as well as just a, a response to further awareness in our community and in our schools of the needs of our students. And I'm really proud of the fact we've been able to, been able to respond to those needs and, and change our, our policies and procedures, you know, appropriately.
So thank you for that. I'm super excited to see this coming through. And I mean, part of the reason why is I'm, I, I, I think it's such a huge issue for, for our transgender students. And, and then, so my last question, and sorry that I do have questions, I know we all want to get through this agenda. But how, what, what the professional development plans might be, is that kind of next stage to really get this into buildings?
Yes, so, so Lisa Love and her group in Health Education offers trainings. The la, this last year prior to COVID, monthly trainings were offered for students that were led by Brendan Hamm, who is one of her employees who has a lot of expertise in this subject. And with the trainings, it's always important to remember that they are voluntary. So we don't always get everyone that necessarily needs to attend the trainings, but we do have attendance each month that they are offered. And in addition, this policy requires that Lisa Love, as the District Representative and point of contact for this policy, that she also receives training through OSPI, which OSPI will be offering this next year. So there's, I would say that Lisa Love is already has like a, a high level of expertise and, and does this. But it is great that the training is available through OSPI for the entire state. So that's kind of where we're at as first training right now, but we'd always love to have more opportunities.
So we would need to work with union partners to have PD that goes into, for staff and buildings.
Yes, and as we know, that's always a struggle.
Okay.
Can I add to that? So, so we were, yeah, so like, we, we also, for leasing herself around the saving walkway in schools, so we integrate that into a lot of the other content areas, whether that's book selection stories, it's mentor text in the LA or around our social emotional learning framework when we're doing lessons, especially including our anti-harassment, anti-bullying curriculum that we use. And so we definitely use these as highlights so that we really work about, you know, an anti harassment, non-discriminatory policies that we have here. We, we do do that with staff. And then we turn, expect them to let that off into their classrooms for a warm and welcoming space.
Thank you, Chief Jesse. We need to move on to Director Harris.
And I would suggest to Chief Jesse, I love that as an aspiration, but we've seen that that doesn't happen. And again, I want more accountability and I want more PC and so pleased to see this come through. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hersi.
None for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Mack.
I need a button that's closer. I don't have to switch screens back and forth. Thank you. No questions.
Thank you. Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. I'm wondering how this, first of all, I love this. I'm, I'm very supportive, totally. I'm glad that we're getting this taken care of here, or we will be at the next meeting at least. I'm wondering how this applies to our policymaking also because I, I want to, I want, if I can, harken this back to back in the earlier portion of our meeting, when we were looking at policy fourteen, thirty, one, four, three, zero. It's the participation policy. And several times in this policy, it says he or she. And I think that could be replaced by just saying the speaker. Because it's talking about, if this speaker won't stop, you can ask, you know, he or she could be asked this or you can say, you know, replace that with he or she, replace it with the speaker, or I guess they could be replaced too. Either way, I'm wondering if this will apply to our policies also because like those, I feel like that, I'm sorry to mention this when we were looking at that policy. But I'm, I'm wondering, again, like, will this apply then to our policies, our, our verbiage we use?
I'll refer to Senior Legal Counsel Ronald Boyd. I don't know if he wants to answer that.
You know, I, I would say that speaking for myself in the last year that I've been editing policies and writing policies, I've tried to make an effort to not include he or she and use more inclusive terms in the, the writing. And I think that that is something that I'll be, I can discuss with Ellie Wilson Jones as far as creating a guideline to distribute to staff in policies and something that we'll be thinking of to make sure that those terms are used.
Yes, Ronald, and what we could do, I know with conversations we're having in executive committee are about the bar and, and or there may be a mechanism where we can just add that when we are developing our policies to think about, just to, to, to review it to make sure that it, it is gender neutral.
I, I agree. I think that's, that's a, a good suggestion.
Can I ask, sorry, Director DeWolfe?
Yes, it's pressing, please.
Well, I just want to suggest that we consider at a future time and exec that whether or not it's possible legally to do a universal pronoun removal change to they from she, her throughout our policies. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I guess that kind of is my, my question. My point of it all was that maybe we do need a separate policy about the pronoun usage and, and writing of the policies. So anyways, that was one that I had a question about. Again, super supportive of this. I'm so thankful for all the work that's been done. No further comments or questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to thank you again, Ronald, for your work on this. And we're just really excited to see that the resolution and the corresponding policies are moving through. This is exactly what we hope to do in, in our work. So thank you. Now we'll move on to introduction, item number ten. This is amend board policy number three, two, zero, seven, prohibition of harassment, intimidation and bullying. This came through Curriculum and Instruction Policy Committee on June ninth for consideration. So Chief Human Resources Officer, Dr. Clover Cod, you'll be briefing us. Thank you.
Yes, yes. I'm also joined here by Tina Mead, who's the Director of Investigations and Compliance, also our designated HIB compliance officer for the district. So, can you hear me? Okay. So per Washington Administrative Code, every school district in Washington is required to adopt the state's model HIB policy developed by WASDA. In two thousand nineteen, the legislature passed requirements revising the model policy, which meant we needed to revise our policy. The bar before you, the edits are not only required by law and they are oriented in compliance. We did incorporate feedback from the Curriculum Instruction Committee. So for starters, we changed the title of the policy to the prohibition of harassment, intimidation or bullying and made it very clear that this is about students, not adults. We differentiate between policy thirty-two oh seven and fifty-two oh seven, where thirty-two oh seven is when the targeted person is a student and fifty-two oh seven applies when the targeted person is a district employee or volunteer. We provide reference to RCW twenty-eight A dot six, four, two, dot zero, one, zero, which is the statute prohibiting discrimination on the basis of sex and inequality in the educational opportunities afforded to women and girls. We have explicitly stated that harassment, intimidation and bullying are separate but related behaviors and that each behavior must be addressed appropriately. We changed the label of the person allegedly engaging in negative behavior as an aggressor versus a perpetrator. Additionally, we added the requirement to convene a five oh four or IEP team if the aggressor or the targeted student is a student who qualifies with a disability. And this is already something that's done in practice, but now this will be represented in policy. So additionally, we have added the protected activity of anybody who is participating in an investigation as possible grounds for a retaliation claim. We have included an explicit reference to restorative practices as a possible intervention. This was, was a request made by Directors at the CNI Committee. And there is mandatory training requirement for the designated HIB compliance officer to attend trainings offered by OSPI. And then we added the word directing versus authorizing the superintendent to develop an associated procedure, should you approve of the changes to this policy. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you. We'll begin with Director Rankin, who is our CNI Policy Committee Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, this came through our committee twice, I think, and we had a lot of conversation. There was a lot of confusion the first time around the, well, not around the decision, but around separating the two, separating the policies into, you know, if the, if the target is an adult versus if the target is a student. And so there was some confusing, tangled language that, that muddied it a bit. And so I really appreciate the collaborative work that was done to respond to board comments and the discussion that came out of that and some of the changes that Dr. Cod mentioned. I, in thinking about the greater context and where these various policies overlap, I'm wondering if this policy doesn't also fall under the umbrella of needing to be re looked at in context and across, across policies in relationship to our just passed resolution. And I don't know that, that, I don't, I don't have an answer. That's just, that's a wonder that I have if that needs to be included in that.
Sure. One thing that comes up for me is that these policies don't stop being living documents when we approve them. And so any new stuff that comes through, whether resolutions or new commitments or directives are always being examined against our policies and hopefully we're updating them. I think what we could do is just, if this does feel like there's a connector and intersection, we just think about bringing this forward once again.
Okay.
Director Hampson.
Uh, yeah, so agree with the fact that this will be, needs to be looked at again in that context. Um, just a couple of quick questions. One, I'm, I have mixed feelings about using the R C W reference instead of the list because this does serve as an informative document to the public, to community, to our constituents who read this policy. And I don't think we're yet, at a place yet where we don't have to call these things out. So that's my two cents on that. Um, and then the other piece of it is I really appreciate, um, immensely the inclusion of the I E P portion, I E P and five oh four portion. Um, and I, the thing that remains for me is it, it, um, talks about triggering an I E P meeting if the person is the vic, the victim. Or am I misreading it? Is it whether they're the aggressor or the, cause we don't have any protections of, of students with I E Ps in, in these scenarios where they're treated the same as a student that, you know? And so I really appreciate this being here. I just can't tell if this is only meant to provide support to the victim or if, if the person who's a perpetrator or the aggressor, um, sorry, switch of language, is, is also triggered to have an I E P meeting.
Uh, Director Hampson, both. Uh, because, um, in one sense, you could be looking at the aggressor and whether it's a manifestation of their disability.
Right.
Right, on that, that's on the one hand, but on the other, you, um, the I E P team might also, if the, um, if the victim has an I E P, um, or five oh four, we would wanna make sure that, um, that if the harassment is occurring or the bullying is occurring, that it's not interfering with, um, their, um, sort of faith as a result of the harassment, intimidation or bullying incident. And so it's really meant to include both.
And I, and I, and I, so thank you for that. And then to just be a really, a really clear note that, that includes, as it pertains to involvement of law enforcement, um, which is something that we have to, that's not here, but that we have to clarify because there is that intersection. And then, um, I had another point, but I lost it, so I'll just move on. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris.
Uh, yeah, close to my heart issue. I won't be voting for any policy that comes through with, uh, procedures written out in a draft. This has to be processed.
Sorry, um, Director Harris, Director Harris, I'm, I'm only catching about every half a third word. Um, can you, can you repeat yourself, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Is this better?
I think so. I think so.
Okay.
Not for me.
It is for me.
Perfect. I won't be voting for this policy unless it comes together with the superintendent procedures. To wait for the superintendent procedures and not to vote on it as a package is extraordinarily distressing to me, given the fact that we have paid out a great deal of money on these issues. It, it is our fiduciary duty not to delegate that and wait until sometime or a, um, to be cer, to, to be certain. And, and, and we really need to work on those details because again, people's rights are at, at stake, students' rights are at stake, and if we say what we believe in, then it needs to be a package. Thank you so much. Last piece would be.
Can I, we had, we had this discussion.
Please let Director Harris finish.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate immensely. I would like to see us do our investigation with declarations that talk about penalty of perjury. This stuff is serious. People need to stand by what they say with the consequences thereof, and I still cannot understand why we don't do business in that fashion. Thank you. I am done now.
Thank you, Director Harris. Director Hersi.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Director Harris on the bit about, um, making sure that we have superintendent procedures that is aligned with this. I think that that's, uh, poignant specifically for this policy. Um, so I definitely see where those arguments are coming from. No further comments.
Thank you, Director Mack.
Uh, yes, thank you, and I apologize. I have to let you know ahead of time that I'm, I have to get off at five o'clock exactly, so I won't be able to continue, and I apologize for that. Um, and I trust Fred to intro, et cetera, on the, all of the ops-related things. Um, related to this HIB, um, policy, uh, I agree with Director Harris and also Director Hersi that, um, there are superintendent procedures that are, uh, currently written. You can read them online, uh, for this policy. There's a lot of places that leave questions and there's a lot of gaps in my mind in terms of things that are not clear and some places that potentially have issues. Um, and in particular, at the resolution that we passed today, how we manage these and how we talk about them in policy and procedure is critical and not having the superintendent procedure drafted at the same time, so we are having that conversation as a whole conversation instead of just saying that it'll be done later in a way that aligns with our policy, I'm simply not comfortable with. I agree with Director Harris. I won't be able to, um, uh, agree to a revised HIB policy that doesn't have drafted updated superintendent procedures along with it, um, in, in its, uh, presentation to us. And that goes, uh, as well for the next, um, the, uh, the other, the other policy that's on intro in just a few minutes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Threat assessment.
Director Rivetta Smith.
Yes, it's the threat assessment policy. And those have been posted, but they, I'm not sure that they've been fully updated or whatever, but we did actually have them, um, on the threat assessment one, so I appreciate staff doing that. With this one, I've asked repeatedly and I, I feel very strongly about it, that they need to be included.
Thank you. I think they definitely have heard that comment. Director Rivetta Smith.
Hi, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I appreciate the, um, I appreciate the inclusion of the restorative practices, um, verbiage that I asked to be added into this. I question though, that it's followed by when voluntary and appropriate, because all of those are, are sort of when voluntary and appropriate. So it seems really to single that one out for having that directly follow it. I'll even have at the end of that sentence as appropriate. So it seems, if nothing redundant, but also kind of odd that it's directly tied to the restorative practices piece. I'm wondering if that's necessary and I, I would, I would maybe call for, for having that voluntary and appropriate, um, taken off of there since, again, all of those counseling, all of those are all kind of voluntary and appropriate, I believe, or at least you assume that they'll be used when they're voluntary and appropriate. So that is my, uh, concern. May I, may I speak to that?
Director DeWolff? Oh.
Thanks, Dr. Codd, yes.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to make a note that the reason why voluntary and appropriate is added is because you cannot, and we would never want to force, um, uh, uh, you know, the targeted individual of harassment, intimidation or bullying to sit down and, um, mediate, if you will, with the aggressor, that it's not appropriate to force it. So it needs to be a choice. Um, and so it's voluntary, both parties have to agree, um, and it's not always appropriate for those reasons.
Well, of course not. And that's what I'm saying, all of those are things we wouldn't force anyone into, counseling. I don't know that you would, uh, force somebody into that. Um, my point is that those are all voluntary and appropriate things, so it just seems odd to have that, um, had done specifically to the restorative practices one. So, um, my, my concern stands, I guess, on that.
Thank you. Uh, and I have no, Director Rankin, quickly, please.
Sorry, thank you. Um, I just wanted to go back to the policy and procedure thing, cause we did have a conversation about that in C and I in relationship to this and, uh, what, uh, was determined. So I'm not sure what the path of the communication was, but we determined, um, that we agreed there was a need to address when there is expected to be procedure accompanying, um, uh, policy. And, um, a need to, I think, I think what we decided is, is to sort of put that forward to the exec committee as something that needs to be solved, because I will say, in some cases, we do need to see the procedure with the policy, but in other, I would not wanna ever say that we have to have both at the same time because, um, of the, the potential waste of time and resources in developing a procedure around a policy that then is not approved. Uh, so yes, so we, we talked, we discussed that in committee and I, I don't know where, I know it was made note of, um, but that is clearly a discussion that, that we need to continue on the bigger scale, not just with this item.
And I guess this is superintendent, you know, I would just second that too. If we go back to policy thirteen-ten, it's, uh, something that we should review at executive committee, cause I do believe, I mean, it's hard for staff to add time into developing procedure and bringing it forward with policy. Also, a little weird to develop a procedure before the policy's adopted as things change, as it moves through the process. So I guess I would ask us to keep moving this forward until we can clarify exactly how the board would like to move forward with policy and procedure. Cause right now it says there's not a need to bring it forward at the same time. And we put that in a Friday memo recently.
Thank you. It sounds like we may be able to, it sounds like we'd also add this to our executive, August Executive Committee. So we'll now move on to introduction item number eleven. This is approval of, excuse me, approval of contract with Northwest Education Association, N W E A, to increase measures of academic progress, MAP, testing and professional development. This came through the Curriculum and Instruction Policy Committee on June ninth for approval. Dr. Debacker, I believe you'll be briefing us, and it is five oh one P M. and we have thirteen items left. Over to you.
Good afternoon and thank you, President DeWolff. This item that is in front of you is to increase our use of MAP in Seattle Public Schools. Currently, we use MAP in grades K through two, and we have done that for about ten years. We are asking that we expand MAP to the use of grades K through eight, or one through eight, actually. Um, and the reason for that is in the absence of smarter, balanced assessment data, um, from this past spring. We feel that we are going to have a need to be able to look at how students are doing as they come into school at the beginning of the school year, and MAP is an excellent instrument to do that. We also know that in our strategic plan with our third grade reading goal and with our fifth and seventh grade math goals, we are going to need some data to look at how we are meeting the promises that we made in our, our strategic plan. The reason this is coming before you is because it is, it exceeds the threshold of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, by us during the expansion. Uh, so with that, I will ask Amber questions.
Thank you. We'll start with our C and I policy, excuse me, C and I Policy Committee Chair, Director Rankin.
Thank you. Yeah, we had a, a good conversation around this in, um, over a couple of sessions in committee. And, um, I'm, I'm, it was, it was noted pretty specifically that this was, um, you know, increasing standardized testing is not something that there's a lot of support for. However, in, uh, in these bizarre circumstances, the, the ability and need to sort of, um, take a quick, uh, gather, gather a quick picture of what's happening with students and, um, especially in the event that a lot, you know, a lot of times, uh, students or teachers will have information or, um, details about students or potential different reading levels, different math levels, whatever, from the previous year's, um, instructor. And, uh, it's been, it's gonna be a long time since kids were in class, um, between, um, this year and next year. So just trying to figure out a way to support, um, getting kind of an even baseline for everybody. Um, I, I did ask about, you know, possibilities for other kind of measures and, um, the reason that the MAP was chosen is cause it's a contract that we already have, and so it would expand an existing contract. It is a low stakes test that is a, a small, it requires a, a short amount of time. Um, this isn't one of the, you know, several hours over several days. It's, it's, it's a, it's a short time period, um, to administer and take the test. Um, the other thing that I wanna note is, uh, um, we discussed the importance of ensuring, or at least that I as a, as the chair of the committee and also just as a board director, uh, asked for the assurance that, that the, um, results of the testing would be used, you know, with a near, very narrow focus, not, not in a punitive way against educators or schools or students, um, but as a quick kind of flashpoint. Um, and the other thing that I wanna note that's important is that, uh, it was, uh, I think, when it was first presented, the idea was to require it for some schools and offer it to other schools. And my feeling was that, um, for the data to really be meaningful across the district and, um, and also just out of sort of, uh, a matter of principle, I guess, um, I felt really strongly that if we're gonna require any groups of students to take, not, a, a, any schools to administer it, that, uh, for grades one through eight, that we should require all students and not just, um, low-income students. That just didn't, that didn't sit right with me at all. Um, individual families will still have, of course, the opportunity to opt out individually. Um, but it seems like as a data collection tool and, um, and, and to be meaningful that, that everybody should be, uh, administering it. So that's sort of, yeah. The nutshell, the big, the, what's bigger than a nutshell?
Thank you. Director Hampson.
Uh, I do have, uh, questions about this, um, but for the sake of, um, time, I will provide them to, um, Diane Debacker and Curriculum Instruction Chair, um, uh, offline and let others go.
Thank you, Director Hampson. And as always, folks can ask these questions to these folks between, uh, our introduction and action as well. Director Harris.
Uh, I'll be voting against this. We worked very, very hard to get MAP out of the district. Uh, back in the days of Superintendent Goodlow Johnson with the, um, huge complex of interests. I am anti-testing. Prior to getting on the board, I helped people opt out and would like to be able to do so again, except for the fiduciary duty, if we pass this as policy. I don't think that they're culturally responsive and I think we can do a hell of a lot better. But to sneak this in for one year and to think that it's not going to continue and that the pendulum has swung is to be, um, naive. Thank you.
Certainly, uh, not a fan of, uh, characterizing colleagues, but we'll move on to Director Hersi.
I wanna add, I usually opt out my own children and there is nothing sneaky about multiple opportunities to engage on this issue.
Director Hersi.
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Rivetta Smith.
Um, I, I, I appreciate Director Harris's, uh, historical perspective on this, you know, that none of us want to, um, undo what has been worked on for years. I also, I do, um, I feel that this is something that has been, um, we have discussed this at length and we have, I had an opportunity, I know, to ask all the questions I have on it. Um, and assuming it is just one year, I'm hoping that that, that stays true. Uh, we'll see where we go from there, so thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions at this time, but have been grateful for, uh, Director Rankin for, uh, the conversations, uh, about this. So we'll now move on to introduction item number twelve, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty City of Seattle Summer Food Service Program, Services, excuse me, Program Project Services Agreement. This came through the Executive Committee on June seventeenth for approval. Mr. Bedesta, I believe you will be briefing us.
Uh, yes. Um, this, uh, is, this year's, uh, contract with the City of Seattle by which the city engages the district's, um, nutrition services team to be the producer of meals for the city's summer food service program. Um, uh, they, this, uh, agreement completely reimburses nutrition services for its cost to produce. They, this agreement completely reimburses nutrition services for its cost to produce meals which will be distributed at sites chosen by the city, you know, at at various locations this summer. There's still some work to be done on where, you know, what community centers or other type facilities might be available. So we'll still have some negotiations to do with the city, but again, we end up being the the producer of these meals and have been for many, many years on an annual basis. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chief Podesta. And I just wanted to clarify that this came through executive, I think, just because of timing with committees, correct? Usually this would likely go through.
Operations. Be- because the city was having challenges thinking about where they would place the program and distribute meals, they took a bit longer to get the contract together and get it to us. And by then, the final operations committee meeting for the spring ahead occurred, so we took it to exec to make sure we could get this in time. They would like to produce meals by July one.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to Director Hampson.
Who did you say?
Director Hampson.
Oh. No question. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Harris.
Could not be more positive about past one and Aaron, Jeff and the lunch ladies and Fred and the whole team. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you to all of the folks who serve our meals. Next up is Director Hersi.
No question for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Excuse, yes, Director Rankin.
Oh, Director Max? Okay, sorry. I forgot that she said she was stepping off. I was confused. No, no questions. This is great.
Thank you. Director Rebecca Smith.
No questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next move on to introduction item number thirteen, the twenty twenty through twenty twenty one Puget Sound Joint Purchasing Cooperative Interlocal Agreement. This came through the Operations Committee on June fourth for approval. Mr. Podesta, I believe you'll be briefing us once more.
Yes, this is a one-year extension of our interlocal agreement by which the district is a member of the Puget Sound Joint Purchasing Co-op to purchase food, a variety of food products from U S Foods. We leverage economies of scale by joining with other districts to participate in this cooperative and feel we negotiate better prices than we might on our own. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. We will actually start this with Director Hampson.
Sorry, I, just a note, I, it's taking a long time for the PDF to to load back up for me, but in terms of does this at all interfere with potential to for Director Smith to be able to to purchase fresh foods, to have contracts with with tribal providers? Can you speak to that briefly, or I can take it offline?
It does not. This is really kind of a backstop that that U S Foods provides a wide variety of products that we can order from. It doesn't require us to have them as a sole provider.
We're not locked in. Okay.
Yeah, we will continue to look for, a- as we try to improve our menu, of course, the coming school year will be perhaps a bit different, but we will continue to look for other providers and continue to broaden the menu.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Director Harris.
All good here. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hersi.
None for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Rebecca Smith.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And none here, Chief Podesta. Okay, next we will move to another likely robust conversation. Introduction item number fourteen, approval of Board Policy Number three two two five School Based Threat Assessment and Amending Board Policy Number four three one four Notification of Threats of Violence or Harm. This came to the Operations Committee on June fourth for consideration. Mr. Jesse, I believe you'll be briefing us.
Good evening again. Yep, so moving forward for hopeful approval of the Board Policy, new Board Policy three two two five as it's revised based on new state law. New state law requires all school districts in Washington State to revise and make up a new Board Policy around school-based threat assessments as well as a superintendent procedure, and that is what is attached to this particular bar. Think this is in response to over the last least decade plus around shootings onsite on campuses, whether that's Sandy Hook or Stoneman Douglas High School. Some of the key tenants of this particular policy and response to new state law talk about the development of threat assessment teams for our schools to help make a determination of any generalizations, determine the threat without actually thinking of the level of threat rather than discussing or identifying through implicit bias, personal characteristics. That will include a required training for each of those school-based threat assessment teams as well as a review process that they'll have to go through that will include a racial biased equity tool to review what happened at those school sites if they did make any references, any referrals to threat assessment. I think also part of this is just around really doing more inquiry work and thinking about what's going on as far as the threat itself. Is it really intimate? Sorry, intimate? Or is that a more medium or lower risk assessment? And we really would want to think about getting additional supports to students, supportive families and our CBOs, which may include things that are around connecting with their community or mental health supports if necessary. And so this particular, I know, policy has a lot of things weighted to it. This, again, is part of the requirement by the state to have this in place for the twenty twenty one school year. Like the students' rights and responsibilities, we would want to most certainly align with any of the moves that the Board makes around new policies that would in- impact this particular policy that we have in front of you. With that, that includes my comments. I'll take any questions, please.
Thank you. We'll start with Director Hampson.
Okay, so obvious issues, I think, that we've talked about, and I, this particular policy I worry more about than even the HEB and the the student rights and responsibilities in terms of moving it forward. In part because it's, it's difficult for me yet to tease out with respect to what the state law provides that we need to do. And then, because I believe the state law also dictates a certain level of conflation between student behavior and how we respond to that and how we judge that and threats that are of a mass shooting scale. Anything that comes out of Stoneman Douglas or Sandy Hook or anything like that is in many cases, an external threat or a threat that is related to the student but is very different than behavior that's happening during the school day that then gets assessed as a, as a threat to safety. And so I'm really concerned about that conflation as it exists currently in this policy. And I I realize that that is somewhat dictated by state, but I think we have the oblig- I know we have the obligation to tease that out as much as policy and wonder if there aren't, in fact, two different policies here. So that's my statement on this.
Thank you, Director Harris.
Agree with my colleague. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hersi.
None for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
Yeah, I I share the concerns brought up by Director Hampson, and I, I also am wondering why this would have gone through ops and not curriculum and instruction, even though, I mean, yeah. Um, or or both. And I, unfortunately, even though I do sit on the Operations Committee, this came through in a meeting that I was not able to attend. And had Director Vera Smith attend in my stead. Yeah, I have a lot of the same concerns that my, my kind of understanding of what the state guidelines are and what this policy is maybe intended to address is external threats. And I really worry about it bleeding into interpersonal, interstudent disciplinary measures. Yeah. And it it, it, it's, it's, it makes me nervous as, it sounds sort of like the twenty twenty version of the eighties or nineties versions of putting lots of cops in schools to keep people safe and ending up targeting black and brown students. So I'm really worried about that. And especially when we talk about external threats and things like school shootings, which are rare, are across the boards, nearly all perpetrated by white males. But in our communities, what we've seen is that who is perceived as a threat is a different demographic. So I I have a lot of concerns about how this relates, as Chief Jesse said, to to the other policies that we were talking about today. And and also frankly, concerns about the ability of adults in some of our buildings to, even with a training, accurately assess what is actually, what is, what is a threat, what is an emergency, and what is just something that makes them uncomfortable.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director Rebecca Smith.
I think every, all my concerns have been shared. I I echo with Jennifer Mark and I can have talked about here. So I won't keep us, no further questions.
Thank you, Director Rebecca Smith. And I think if this highlights anything, just to reiterate, is that we should, you should utilize both our new res- recently passed resolution from today and any future, maybe potentially the anti-racism policy to look at these policies for next year, just to continue improving them. So next we'll move on to item number fif- excuse me, number fourteen, fifteen, excuse me, approval of new Board Policy Number three four two four Opioid Related Overdose Response and Amendment to Board Policy Number three four one six Medication at School. This came to the Operations Committee on June fourth for consideration. Chief Jesse, I believe you'll be briefing us again.
Thank, thank you very much. Yep, so this is another, this is a new Board Policy. This is around, related to opioid-related overdose response. This is for us to think about how do we respond if there is a overdose? And what is the medication onsite and who delivered it? So it really does proceduralize how are we going to respond if there was someone to exhibit, you know, what are the identifying factors? Who would respond to it? How do you differentiate from what is a real situation or not? And then who is authorized? What training do they re-provide to respond in these cases? This, this issue has hit our community. And so I feel very fortunate to bring this Board Policy forward to the Board today so that we can set forth and address just these issues that are identified, just even in our own health survey, that, you know, two percent of eighth graders in Washington have experienced or tried heroin, three percent for tenth through twelfth graders. That's something that we just need to be, make sure that we here in the district have an opportunity to, again, have folks who are exactly trained in identifying these issues and can respond to it at our school sites, of course, with those folks who are, meet the adequate training and requirements. I'm also, at this time, Chief Counsel, I'm gonna go back, I mean, Senior Counsel Ronald Boyd also helped draft this, so I'm gonna hand it over to him.
Uh, thank you. Yes, this is a, in response to a new law that the legislature passed, it allows school districts to become designated providers of Narcan in case of an opioid overdose. And luckily, the law allows for us to not provide or not have the Narcan in stock if funding doesn't allow. So long as we make a good faith effort to find a donation source for the Narcan, we are excluded from it. However, we definitely do want to provide Narcan and have it available in our schools in case it's needed as it could have an important life-saving impact for a person suffering from an overdose. And with this, with this law, we have to have the policy in place, so this is the policy. We will have our school nurses trained to become the designated providers in schools. And we'll also have training available for other staff members as appropriate. And for this next year, the City of Seattle is providing the funding for the Narcan as well as the training. So that will take care of the obligation on our part to seek out a funding source for this next year. And they're also covering it not only for high schools, but also for middle and elementary schools as well. So it's a great funding initiative from the the City of Seattle, and we're very appreciative of it.
Thank you, Ronald. Okay, we'll start with our, we'll start with Director Hampson.
Um, I think this is important. Appreciate it. I, I think the equity analysis could use a little more juice. But other than that, I really appreciate all this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris.
I would like to move forward. Yay, June.
Thank you, Director Hersi.
No question for me, but also just wanna shout out that I have to step off at five thirty for a scout meeting, so just a heads up. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hersi. And we're so close. Okay, Director Rankin.
I'm, I'm glad that this is moving forward and that we no longer, I know, for the past couple year or two, had to, had to rely on individual adults being willing to carry the medication, and then they were allowed to deliver it, so that having a broad policy is much better. Well, frustrated about the funding situation. I mean, glad for this year, but in general, that's not super great that we're gonna have to figure out how to do this every year. But then also that it's okay if we don't, and then we don't have to have it, in which case, like, you know, that's just a little weird. But but that's for another day.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director Rebecca Smith.
Yeah, no questions. Appreciate the clarification in the medications at school policy separating the opioid paragraph from where it says written permission is required for drug, for for medication use, because that was an issue at the committee meeting, but so thank you for that, and no other questions or comments.
Thank you. We will now move on to item number sixteen, Bex five Resolution two zero one nine slash two zeros dash three five Oppose Landmark Nomination and Designation of Rainier Beach High School. This came through the Operations Committee on June fourth for approval. Mr. Podesta, I believe you'll be briefing us, and if I could ask you to do that, please, very briefly, I'd like to make sure we can at least get to directors. Yes, Director Harris.
I'm sorry, I have to leave for work commitments. My staff has been here since five thirty, and they don't get to go home until we do the Q C.
Understood. Thank you.
See you soon, and I'll listen to the conversation.
Appreciate you, Director Harris. Have a great rest of your day. Okay, Mr. Podesta, please.
Certainly, this action authorizes a resolution opposing the designation of the existing Rainier Beach High School building as landmark. The, you know, replacing Rainier Beach High School is a key goal of the Bex five levy and was clearly a full replacement of the building and a renovation of the Performing Arts Center has been in scope for the Board that created the levy and remains the wishes of the community. And a landmark designation would severely constrain our ability to design a building that meets our high school educational specification and would impact educational outcomes at the new school negatively. And I'll take any questions the Board has.
Thank you. Okay, Director Hampson.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris.
I believe she stepped off.
Okay, Director Hersi.
This is my last one. No questions. Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, and I was grateful. Thank you, and I was grateful that you could join. I just wanna make sure none of the schools in your district, so I appreciate being able to stick on for that. Director Rankin.
Um, no, just to say, I know we've gotten maybe a comment or multiple comments from a small number of people or the same person about this. And just to reiterate what Mr. Podesta said, which is that the community of Rainier Beach High School and around Rainier Beach High School, their desire is for a new building.
Thank you, Director Smith.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, and I have none, and I'm grateful that you could provide that, the background about the community. Next, we'll move on to item number seventeen. We have about seven to go. This is Bex five, approval of, to fund a school-based health center at Nova at Horace Mann School from the Bex five program placement fund. This came through the Operations Committee on June 4th for approval. Mr. Podesta, I believe you'll be briefing us today. I did want to share one small bit of background, which is that back in 2018, as the city was working on the FEP levy, I worked with Councilor Bagshaw on really fighting for funding in the, in the FEP levy for health center infrastructure at Nova. So I'm really grateful to see kind of our, meeting that additional demand with the support from Bex five. And obviously, Nova is in my district, so really excited to hear this. Director, excuse me, Mr. Podesta, I'll let you jump in first.
Yes, this transfers $250,000 from the Program Placement Fund, which is the flexible funds in the Bex five levy to cover our staff costs and permitting costs for tenant improvements to create the health center at Nova. The actual construction costs will be reimbursed by Seattle King County Public Health.
Thank you. Okay, Director Hampson.
Happy to see it. No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
No questions. This is great and something I know students have advocated for, and I'm happy to see it.
Yes, Director Iveta Smith.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. And I have none, obviously, I spoke a moment ago. Next up is introduction item number eighteen, Bex five, approval of budget transfer and construction change order number three for the Van Asselt. The school was renamed Rising Star Elementary School after the contract had been executed with Wayne's Roofing, Inc., Elementary School at the African-American Roof Replacement Academy. And I want you to know all that was in parentheses, so if that sounded confusing, I apologize. This item did come through the Operations Committee on June 4th for approval. Mr. Podesta, back to you.
Again, we've discussed with the board that localized roof repair at Rising Star, once the repair was started, it was clear that the damage to the existing roof was covered a much larger area than we expected. This was work begun last summer. And so this is why we have program contingencies in our capital program when we uncover surprises. So this gives us the funding to complete the work, and the completed roof repairs will be done this summer and be ready for the fall.
Thank you, Fred. I will let you grab some water there, and we'll jump over to Director Hampson for any comments or questions.
None for me, thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
Nope, no questions, just yay.
Thank you, Director Iveta Smith.
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you, and none here. Thank you for bringing this forward. The next item is number nineteen, Bex four and BTA four, approval of a transfer of $300,000 from the Bex four program contingency funds to the Daniel Bagley Elementary School Modernization and Addition Project. This came through the Operations Committee on June 4th for approval. Mr. Podesta, back to you.
Yes, we're currently working on a 10-classroom addition, addition to the gym space at Bagley. I think Director Rivera Smith toured the job site yesterday. The original project budget only included new furnishings for the 10 classrooms, but as we got into the project, it was clear that some of the furniture that would remain in the existing historical building, you know, was in very poor condition, and we need to replace some existing furniture, so this provides funding for that.
Thank you. We'll move to Director Hampson.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
No questions, thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Director Iveta Smith.
Yeah, thank you. I did get to go see the school. It was, it's beautiful, really exciting, glad that we're gonna be getting equally new functional furnitures, so thank you.
Thank you. One, I don't have any questions at this time. We'll move on to introduction item number twenty. Item is Bex five, award of architectural engineering contract P one, seven, five, three to Basetti Architects for the Van Asselt School Addition Project. Mr. Podesta, over to you.
Again, we're making significant addition to Van Asselt School, 30 classroom addition and a gymnasium addition, and this is the really kicking off point for this project, to hire Basetti Architects to do architectural and engineer work for us, engineering work for us. The contract value is about $3.5 million, and, you know, we'll begin to design the new school, or the addition to the school, which we plan to support, you know, many other projects as interim sites.
Thank you. Okay, first up is Director Hampson.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
Sorry, did you say Director Rankin?
I did, I did.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Director Iveta Smith.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, and none here. Thank you, Mr. Podesta. Next up is item number twenty, twenty-one, excuse me, Bex four, BTA four, Resolution two, zero, one, nine, slash, two, zero, dash, three, two, acceptance of the building commissioning report for the Lincoln High School Modernization and Addition Project. This came through the Operations Committee on June 4th for approval. Mr. Podesta.
As the board is aware, the district successfully reopened Lincoln High School this past fall. As part of that process, the school was significantly improved and new mechanical and electrical systems were put in. This action accepts the commissioning report, wherein we hire kind of a quality assurance consultant to test all our new systems, to make sure they're functioning as designed, and our consultant tests those systems are working as designed and recommends that we accept the work and, and the report. And this gives the board's blessing on such an action. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, Director Hampson.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
I don't have any questions, but since Director Mack is not here, I will just say that I know how much she likes final acceptance.
She really does, you're right.
So, in her stead, yay!
I appreciate you. She'll appreciate that. Director Iveta Smith.
Yeah, equally excited for Director Mack, thank you.
And I have no questions here, thank you. We'll now move to introduction item number twenty-two, which is a Bex five award contract P five, one, four, two for general contractor slash construction manager, otherwise known as J C C M, to Lighted Construction, Inc., for the Northgate Elementary School Replacement Project. This came through the Operations Committee on June 4th for approval. Mr. Podesta.
Thank you. For complex projects like a whole school replacement, as in the case of Northgate, the district uses the alternative public works process where we hire a general contractor, construction manager, to be our partner and advocate and to help us conduct the actual construction bids and manage the project, you know, from before the new building is designed. We had a competitive process and got four bidders to, for respondents to our request for proposals, and have selected Lighted Construction to help to be our partner as we work through this project. And we'll be excited to have them on board. Construction will go on starting next year through 2023.
Thank you, Director Hampson.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Director Rankin.
No questions. I just wanna note, Northgate is one of my district schools, and it's a really special community, and just wanna express particular appreciation for the work so far that has gone into the design process and including the community. And I'm excited to see construction move forward in creating this really special school for a wonderful community.
Yeah, I, if you let, allow me, I can't say enough about both the project team and the school team, you know, really embracing this project and being supportive of, I'm very excited about it.
Yeah, it's been really awesome to witness that partnership and community, authentic community engagement.
Thank you, Director Iveta Smith.
No questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for sticking through. We're at item number twenty-three. I don't have any questions on that one, Mr. Podesta. So we'll now move to introduction item number twenty-three, Bex four and BTA three, final acceptance of contract P five, zero, eight, eight with Lincoln Construction, Inc., for the McGilver Elementary New Cafeteria Building and Seismic Upgrades and Main School, and Main Building School Project. This came through Ops on June 4th for approval. Mr. Podesta.
Yes, again, this is our favorite milestone, a final acceptance to close out the contract. The construction was successfully completed in August 2018, a new cafeteria and seismic improvements to the building, and, you know, we're past the warranties stage, and this is where we release any final retainage or bonds on the project and call it done. And what, this is why Director Mack likes these so much.
Yes, thank you. And if, I'm actually not gonna call directors, but if you have a question or comment, let me know now.
Oh, I, this is Director Hampson, this is my district. This is a great little innovative solution to absolutely no space for cafeteria, so I'm grateful that they were able to get this. It's a beautiful little space.
Thank you. Rank, Director Rankin or Iveta Smith, anything?
Just yay, final acceptance for Director Mack.
Yep, yay!
Okay, we'll now move to our final item, introduction item number twenty-four, Bex five, final acceptance of contract K five, one, one, zero with Shoe Chart Corporation for the Cascade Parent Partnership Program Roof Replacement Project. This came through Ops, June 4th for approval. Mr. Podesta, one final time.
Yes, likewise, another final acceptance. The project was successfully completed last fall, and we're ready to close out the contract.
Thank you. Directors, any comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none. I wanna offer that if board directors would like to provide comments, this is the part of the agenda where you are welcome to. It is 5:42 PM, and we are two, we are an hour and forty-two over, so I will let you decide from there, but I'll just go through alphabetically. Director Hampson.
Sorry, are we doing board comments?
Yes, please, briefly.
Okay. It's been a long evening. Thank you, I just wanna say thank you to staff for sticking with us and doing all the incredible work that I know it takes to get these bars together, and you're doing that on top of trying to recreate an entire school system. And so I just wanna take this short moment to show my appreciation for all of you. We do recognize how hard you are working and grateful to all my fellow board members for your ongoing work and collaboration as well. Keen and giddy, and have a good evening.
Thank you, and I concur. Director Rankin.
I'll just echo the big thanks of Director Hampson, and I kinda forgot that the school year ended, so. And this is technically, you know, now we're moving into summer, which it feels a lot the same, but just way to go, everybody, I guess, for making it. And, and yeah, onward and upward.
Thank you, Director Iveta Smith.
Hi, yeah, I sometimes don't feel prepared for board comments, but I actually had prepared, but you know what? I'm not gonna make us sit through whatever I was gonna say. I'll save it for next time, and I'll be waiting for that. So no questions, no comments, no other things. Thank you, everybody, for all sticking through it. That's all, good night.
Thank you, Director Iveta Smith. And I will just add, I don't have any comments this evening, other than thanks to the folks for supporting the resolution and for all the folks that sent in emails. But what I wanna clarify is tonight's, excuse me, today's meeting was a little bit different in that we have basically been collecting a ton of work over the last few months, or work has just finally piled in after the governor's order allows us to do work that's not necessarily routine. So I apologize to directors and staff for disrespecting your time by going over by an hour and a half, but thank you for allowing us to have really robust and thoughtful conversations. Next meeting, next July 8th meeting will likely be a little bit less items, because many hopefully will be able to consent. So hopefully we'll have a little bit better of time management on my part, and I thank you all for joining us. Do concur with Director Hampson and my other colleagues that you've done a tremendous amount of work just to support us on this meeting while also trying to serve and support our students across the district. So thank you. With that, there being no further business to come before the board today, the regular board meeting is now adjourned at 5:44 PM. Thank you all, and I will see you very soon.
Good night.